Hi Chris.
Hi Pete, how are you?
I am good. How about you?
I'm doing great, thank you.
Well, you're in your office. I'll wave to you out to my window. You might be able to see my office window. I was looking at aerial maps of Medfield from eighteen eighties or something this afternoon. And I was just fascinated because I didn't recognize any of the buildings. Hi Mike.
Hi Pete, how are you?
I am good. How about yourself?
I'm great, thank you.
Good.
Good day.
Hey Mark. Although I was shocked when I went outside today, how quickly I froze.
Oh, it's freezing.
The wind blew our outdoor glass top table over and broke it.
Yeah, part of our fence blew down as well. But we did not lose power, shockingly.
Oh, I'm still shocked by that.
Yeah. I should say we have not lost power yet.
Yet.
If I go off in the middle of this meeting, you'll know why.
Mark, how old is your house?
Eighteen thirty-six.
Wow, that's old. How about yours, Mike? Yours is old?
Eighteen fifty-three.
Wow.
Yeah, there was a house here that's older than that, but it was burned down. So it's part of the basement dates to sixteen, the sixteen seventies or earlier.
I'm not sure I'd want to go down that part of the basement.
You know, you wouldn't necessarily, I mean, if you look closely, you can figure out which part it is, but it's not so obviously different because they just kind of added onto it, but.
So do you have a concrete foundation somewhere now?
Yes, yeah, but it's stone on the, on the sides.
On the outside, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. There's not a lot of headroom. There's no real options for a finished basement down there. So it's, I go down there at my own peril when I have to get stuff because there's all sorts of things for me to bang my head on.
Hi Nick, hi Gus.
Hey Pete, I don't see myself on the screen of the video.
We don't see you either.
Yeah, Pete's taking control of the stop video and the new one at this point, so. Participation is at the chairman's discretion.
Well, our furnace, I just got word our furnace went into some red screen lockout downstairs, so maybe it's all part of the same thing.
Furnace and the internet are connected, huh? Okay.
Make sure I have it.
Internet of Things, you know, the furnace goes down and there goes your video camera at the same time.
That's weird. I just got off of MS Teams call. Well, everything says you should see me.
It says I should see you on my end too. It says your video has been started.
Do you have a little cover for your camera like I do?
Well, I do, but that's, that's off. I just got off an MS Teams video call, so. It was on. It says that I'm using my integrated camera. Here, video settings.
I have a recent photo of you that I could share that you could.
Yeah. That's strange. Well, the good news is my audio and microphone are both working.
Yeah, your audio is great.
So I had that good for a week and then what the heck? Can't figure.
Systems, they're, they're great when they work. So Gus, do you mind if we just start?
No, just start, yeah, just start.
Okay.
Why I'm blacked out.
All right, as, as a special favor to Gus, we'll start the meeting with, "Hear ye, hear ye."
Yes, yes. Let the record so show.
All people having business before the select board of the town of Medfield draw near and you shall be heard by select people, Michael Marcucci, Gustav Merby and Osgard Peterson. Christine shared with us a, a story about the Sudbury Select Board who apparently reported each other to the Attorney General's Office for violating the open meeting law by not announcing the members of the meeting. So we've announced the members of the select board that are participating tonight.
And we're, Pete, we're participating remotely. Okay, this might not be clear to people, we're participating remotely, we're not all meeting together in a meeting. So you should make sure people know that.
So pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelve twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteen twenty twenty order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Medfield Select Board is being conducted via remote participation, no in-person attendance of members. Of the public will be permitted. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may do so by following the instructions on the agenda and meeting notice. All votes subject to remote participation and therefore will be roll call votes. And we remind people as always that our meetings are being recorded. We do start with a moment of appreciation for our troops that are serving around the world, so why don't we do that first? Thank you. We have appointments, several appointments. First one is with Doug Pollard, request use of Medfield State Hospital for Pollard, Texas Q, starting in April.
May Doug a panelist?
So I had suggested the last time that we had a request to use the state hospital, there were some traffic issues that I was, that I learned about because they were in my neighborhood and, and it affected my neighbors who got in touch with me. And we had talked about maybe setting up a checklist to use going forward. So I just, and Mark had one in Franklin that he was going to share with us that, so that, that would be my suggestion that we still have, that we have a checklist going forward for this sort of thing. Mr. Pollard?
Hi, good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and thanks for the approval from last October. We're looking forward to the spring coming up and was hoping to go back to the same location and run it through the end of June, starting in April. I was unaware of traffic issues during my events, but I did notice while we were out there that there were a few other events that were happening that there were traffic issues, but I'll be more than happy to comply with whatever I can do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, no, I don't think it was your event or your, your being there that caused the traffic problems, but at least not that I'm aware of. Gus, did you have any questions or comments?
I do not know that. I thought it, I thought from every, everything I saw last over the summer, it seemed like it was well attended, popular and it was well run, so I don't have any concerns.
Tasted good too.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions?
And you're looking to go at that same spot right at the top of the sledding hill there?
Correct, correct. I do have a few other questions that I wanted to follow up with, but obviously, please let me address yours.
No, my, my only complaint was I went one time to, to get food and you were all sold out. Not happy with that, but it was good news for you. No, I have no questions. I think it's great. So what do you have for us?
Um, I was curious about a temporary structure as far as a cargo trailer to possibly leave up there during the dates of the week that I was going to be operating there. A small six by twelve that would hold some of the equipment. Obviously, I'm fully liable for that. There was also a possibility of a tent, more of a tent that the town has provided for some of the schools. I wasn't too sure if those might be available to put up during the times that I'm there. And then also I wanted to follow up with Sarah Raposa on any available picnic tables that could be brought up there that may not be in use in the center of town. I did get approached also by some people wanting to do events up there. Obviously, the COVID restrictions and protocols we would have to follow. Sporting events, team dinners or team lunches, similar to the high school football team or any events in the spring that come up through those. I've been approached by a few of those people that are heading those up. Wasn't too sure how you wanted to address those kinds of things. You know, if they wanted to have the events there or have the event there and it still be provided by me and they can kind of figure out their own plans.
So I think Doug, actually a few of those groups have reached out to me, so I would suggest if anybody contacts you that they need to come in and get permission from the selectmen to do an event like that separate from, from utilizing you.
Terrific, terrific.
We do that separate. We currently don't have any existing tables that aren't being used. We've actually been really shocked at how much use they've gotten over the winter when they weren't covered in snow. But we can talk to the selectmen about that. I'm not aware of a tents that we've loaned to the schools. We don't have a tent currently.
No, I think the school purchased them for their temporary shields from the weather. You know, similar that you would see at a, at a wedding event, you know, that could hold, you know, twenty, fifty, a hundred people, something similar to that. I wasn't too sure if that was something that could be possible or more of a similar tent that I have as far as a pop-up. You know, in a larger size than what I have as far as a ten by ten.
So I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. Are you asking us to provide the tent or you?
No, no, I was just asking for approval to put one up for potential customers that would come in.
Put it up and leave it up or just put it up when you're there?
Put it up only for the time being that I'm there. Obviously, when I'm not there, you know, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday is kind of my main plan of not being there. Obviously, it would be taken down, you know, and then the time that I would be there would be left up overnight. I'm not too sure, you know, what your opinion is on that as the, as the board is concerned.
I get, I don't, I have no problem with you having stuff up there when you're there. My concern with you when you're not there, some of those pop-up tents are not the sturdiest and so I'd have, have some concern if we had a night like we had last night of it blowing around the, and potentially being a hazard for people. That, that, that would be my, my only concern with any stuff that was left up there if it were unsecure or potentially creating an issue. Obviously, it's at your own risk that you leave it up there. But that, that would be my concern with the tent would just be if it were to kind of get loose after hours. There's lots of kids up around there, dogs and the rest of that. I think I, I wouldn't want an unattended pop-up tent just hanging up there, but.
Of course.
I, I would ask you Doug to just touch base with Gary Pelletier, the building commissioner about a tent. I know, I can't recall the details, but we did have an issue with an outside dining that wanted to do a pop-up tent and there were some, some concerns with that. So if you could just check in with him.
Of course.
Thank you.
Doug, one, one question I have. So I just want to understand what it is you actually are asking for. You've had a pop-up tent that I think you use for the cooking part of what you do. So you're asking for a second tent that would be bigger for the dining part. Is that correct? What do we, what do we do with, over at the park near the Unitarian Church for the beer garden? Is there a tent there?
I don't believe Jeff has a tent, but he should be here momentarily and he can let you know.
Yeah, I was thinking that there was, but maybe not.
He may have one, but he, he takes it down. Whatever he puts up, he takes down, I have noticed.
Yeah, it's pretty much similar to what I, I provide for my operation and he provides one as well for his operation as, as well as the other barbecue company, you know, but I wasn't too sure. I was kind of concerned for, you know, clients or customers that are guests that are coming in, you know, maybe there's a sprinkle going on, you know, maybe for them to wait in line for or even possibly to dine at. You know, but majority of people that, what I was finding is that a lot of people were just coming and sitting and enjoying the sunset, you know, and kind of eating on the side of their car. They even brought chairs out on their own. It was just a question I was proposing.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Mr. Sorrell.
Uh, yeah, I'm pretty sure that if you're going to have a tent, it's going to be available to the public that there are much, the more stringent requirements in terms of its construction and, and how it's set up and all. It was an illusion, I think, Chris, to the building commissioner comes under his jurisdiction. I know that the building commissioner in Franklin had to go around when we were allowing restaurants to be outside and do inspections of, ensure that, that state requirements.
Okay. So, looking out for the town's finances, I wanted to raise the issue or the question as to whether or not, if we're doing this on a fairly long-term basis, whether there should be some rent or some sort of compensation to the town?
Was that question for me?
It really is, yeah.
Well, I know.
Doug, folks know, I'll, I'll answer for Doug. Doug just knows there should be no rent.
I know in the past, when I've done these events and other events similar to this, typically there is a daily permit and then if you're operating more than fourteen consecutive days, then the permit will be adjusted. I think, you know, with, with everything that had happened last year and the department, you know, the Department of Health had kind of waived those things for me for the month. However, you know, going into, you know, the spring, maybe that's something I could follow up with the Board of Health with. You know, typically most towns and even for Medfield Day, you know, in the past, you charge us a, a one-day permit kind of thing, but I could follow up with Nancy and see what she would like to do.
Pete, Pete, for what it's worth. I, I understand why you're asking the question. And under regular conditions, I would be sympathetic with it. I think we've, in the past year, we've been doing things to try to basically prop up or help or at least not hinder the businesses we have here in Medfield. And I'm wondering whether, whether we, we might like leave that alone until the COVID restrictions are gone. And that's a, in other words, we got a different decision about what kind of commercial activities do we want on town property when things are fundamentally back to normal? And I think that's a legitimate question then, but right now it feels to me like we're working at cross purposes. In one way, for the last year, we've been trying to find ways to help the businesses in town, you know, survive, maybe even thrive, I don't know, but, you know, get, get through a difficult time with a lot of restrictions. Trying to impose fees before those restrictions. Now, this is important because some of the requests, not particularly yours Doug, I don't think, but some of the others that are going out into the fall, when I read those, I was thinking, well, how long, you know, at some point, we kind of have a, a longer term, normal status decision around the extent to which we want, you know, businesses to be operating on town property with town blessings. But I'm thinking right now, maybe we, we revisit that at the point that the COVID restrictions are off. That might mean that it, they come off before your proposed time, time is up, but that, that would be my reaction not to, not to make it hard on the businesses right now.
All right, I think that's a, a good line to draw, Gus. So why don't we do that? Why don't we say that, that we'll, we'll revisit that issue when the COVID restrictions are lifted? And that might affect you then Doug, if that happens before you're, you're going or we just don't know when this state's going to lift those restrictions. The other thing that I'd like to follow up on is that checklist that I really would like to have, have people that are going to use the town property, especially up at the hospital, to, to go down a list of, of, of different groups in town that they should check. So maybe, Mark, could we get your Franklin checklist that we could maybe try to copy?
Mark sent it over to me. I just haven't had a chance to, to put it together.
Okay. When, whenever you can, Chris.
I did have one more question before I go, obviously.
Please.
My, um, my term ending at the end of June, I do anticipate opening back up in the fall for kind of the same timeframe. Should I then jump on a, a call again similar to this, you know, over the summer to get approval for those dates as well? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and Doug, I'll send you a new license agreement. It'll just, we'll just do an extension of the one we, we signed back in the spring.
Okay.
Okay.
For what, for what it's worth, in me thinking ahead, I, we, first off, I think what you're doing there is great. It seems like it's well received and I think it's helping out the hospital at the current rate place that we're at. But I wonder, after things get back to normal, I, I'm wondering how we can, I, I don't know what the demand from different businesses to do these kinds of things in town is going to be, but I could foresee the possibility that if this is successful enough, that would attract more, more, you know, food vendors of different types and we may actually have to think ahead about how do we want to manage an overall demand for this in a way that's fair for everybody. So I, I don't, it's not an issue I think we have on the plate right now, but I can foresee if we, if we're back to normal and this just turns out to be a really popular place to do stuff like this, then we've got a different set of issues that might come up around the level of demand or the, the extent to which people would like to take advantage of the venue.
It could be a very nice thing to have a bunch of food trucks and Doug's barbecue and, and all sorts of things going on up there during the summer.
Right.
Obviously, that's something that I would, obviously that's something that I, I wouldn't mind entertaining. Obviously, I want the place all to myself. I would also, you know, it would be nice to have a few other vendors up there for maybe a, a certain timeframe or a certain day and kind of do a food festival, you know, up there, you know.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think it's, it's, as I recall from the fall, it's a non-exclusive license. So if somebody else came along and wanted to be up there as well, we'd figure out how to sort that out. So it's not, and I, I agree with Gus on the rent issue at this time and particularly given that it's non-exclusive and it's not interfering with anybody else using it. I think it's different if somebody's renting a big chunk of it as opposed to just sort of being on a relatively small piece of land, but I, I agree that that's a good line to draw and we can kind of revisit this once things open up a little bit.
And then I know there were some restrictions on some of the events that were happening there with the drive-in and then they, I know Gene's coming on a little bit with a porch fest and then obviously there was a holiday festival, you know, are any of those things on the horizon coming up over the spring? Any movies coming in and closing that you guys are aware of? You know, we've had film crews up there in the past that they closed the whole area down, you know, that they restrict access.
Nothing currently. We do have Coolidge Cor, Coolidge Corner Theater was in several weeks ago requesting several dates, but we have not finalized anything as of yet.
Okay, terrific.
I'll let you know about that.
Thank you.
Doug, are you the barbecue that goes to the Coolidge Corner movies up there or not?
I did work with them last fall for an event or two and then also, you know, Dave, I forgot his last name, the Rib Public Gentleman, he also has gone up there quite a few times.
Oh, all right. So can we do our checklist first and then, and then revisit Doug's, uh, request for his use of the property starting in April? Is that going to screw you up, Doug, if we hold off for a couple of weeks?
Um, I, I will plan on moving ahead and I will comply with whatever checklist you provide by any means necessary, but I, I would like to go ahead and proceed with my plans as is.
Yeah, I think the idea, you wouldn't even have to come back to a meeting. I think we, we just approve it on a consent calendar.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
I, Mr. Chairman, I, I think in all honesty, the checklist I provided is for functions of some measurable size in terms of policing, traffic, those types of issues. It wouldn't apply to something, the small one, food truck type of situation.
Okay, all right. Well, maybe we should just go ahead and permit it now then.
Okay, well, I would then, I would move that we authorize Doug Pollard, CBA Doug's, Pollard's Texas Q to use the state hospital at the top of the sledding hill as requested in April, May and June and it's Wednesday to Saturday.
Correct.
Wednesday to Saturday.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Merby.
Yes.
And Mr. Marcucci, yes.
Thanks Doug, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
You too.
How was the skiing this winter?
Uh, it's been amazing. I'm going again this weekend. I got my days in for sure.
Where do you go? Where do you ski?
JP, season, season pass holder.
You bump into Larkin Brothers up there or they?
I actually, I share the house with them, so it's, it's pretty convenient. I get to cook for them and then they provide some beverages.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Take care.
Gus, there's, there's some tech support for Gus in the Q and A if he hasn't checked it.
Is there? Oh, really?
If you check the Q and A, there's some technical advice for you on your camera.
This camera on all day long. I've had two webinars. I just got off an hour and a half thing and all of a sudden, maybe it just overheated, I don't know.
Gene, thank you for coming. You have a request to use the Medfield State Hospital for Porch Fest.
Um, yeah, the agenda's a little off. We do want to run porch fest, but not at the state hospital. We'd like to review what we did last year, which was in the neighborhoods. Last year we had twenty-seven sites and we ran from one to three in the afternoon. We'd like to extend it till four o'clock on Saturday, May first with a rain date of Sunday, May second. Um, I did speak with the Board of Health and they thought as long as each site is following the guidelines that, you know, as they're established at that point in time, they didn't have issues with it and Chief Garrett and I have exchanged some emails, didn't seem to be issues or concerns from her point of view. We'll be able to provide them with the map well in advance so they can prepare. But what would be new this year, other than extending it for an extra hour, is wondering if we could consider any public sites. For example, I know you're going to talk to Jeff next, but Jeff and I have spoken about whether or not we could have a musician located at the Beer Garden at Meeting House Pond as part of Porch Fest. Whether or not we may get some other requests. I've had another food truck ask if they can participate somehow and, and get matched with a musician as well.
Gus, do you have any comments, questions?
As far as that request goes, I don't automatically see any problem with doing that. Gene, the only question is last year when we did this, the real concern, I think, was to, you know, keep traffic moving. So you didn't get accumulation of people. Now, part of me says it might not be such a big deal this time around, but if you're connected to food trucks, it seems like that almost by definition will create congregations of people. Am I thinking about it the wrong way?
No, I think you're right, Gus. In the way that the. In the way that the, you know, they, the way that Meeting House Pond's been set up, they have food and Zealous Beer in the same location, and people, you know, hang out and have a meal.
Yeah, also, maybe the better question is, if last year, the performers were effectively located in places that was easy for cars to drive by, and I know there are some locations where there's some pretty good musicians that had neighborhood clusters anyway, which made sense to me, even though you had to be careful driving by because of all the people walking on the street. Would the performers that are close to the food venues beyond the driving route, or is it just that there's some performers that would be around the food venues for people that are going to the food venues? I'm willing, you know, I'm willing to modify concepts here if that would make more sense.
Right. Well, we would want to list them as a location on the map so that people would be aware of the, you know, where else they could see live music.
Just trying to picture a lot of traffic going by Meeting House Pond when there's a lot of people at, you know, Zealous or wherever, and music, how that all plays together in a spot like that. This, you know, if you did it over south of Hospital Road, where people could do the loop, that would make sense to me because there's all kinds of room to spread out. If you do it at Meeting House Pond, which as music to accompany people who are there, makes a lot of sense to me. It feels like you could, we could be creating a problem from a traffic standpoint with, I don't exactly know where all the cars would be driving along with all the people.
Well, I mean, I think, though, just to that point, Gus, I mean, there's obviously a lot of parking down there. And so if people were going to go and hear the music and eat and all that, they'll park and be off the road, I think. I think the key would be wherever you were going to have a food truck or something that might invite people to stay longer, to have it be in someplace where there is room to park, or you wouldn't want to do it kind of in the middle of a regular neighborhood where there's only parking on the street, whereas if you did it downtown, did it out by the hospital, did it some places like that, I don't know, Metacoma or someplace, you know, people could park, and they'd be, the people who are staying for a while would be kind of out of the mix. And you wouldn't, and if it were set off from the road, you wouldn't, like a Meeting House Pond, nobody's going to try to see the music on Meeting House Pond by parking on North Street or by parking on Main Street. If you're going to see the music there, you're going to park and walk over and go to it. And so I don't think you'd have the traffic there. I wouldn't want to have it in a different neighborhood where the people are going to be in their car to watch the music, and then you might have an accumulation. So I think you could make that work as long as it was in areas with, as we know from our downtown parking survey, there's actually a lot of parking spots downtown. And if we're in those, in that kind of an area, I wouldn't have the same circulation, but I would want to limit it to avoid the issue that Gus raises. So I think there are spaces where you could have a couple of rounds of people piling up if they decide to stop and stop and eat.
So Mike, I think you and I are actually making the same, raising the same issue. I'm picturing, I'm trying to picture traffic flow in the area around Meeting House Pond as opposed to people who are parking there and walking over to hear the music. That's, that was the picture that I was snagging up on, thinking that has the potential to create, you know, lots of people, what, going down Frere Street, then turning left or right on North Street, or, you know, that just felt like it has the potential to create a traffic snarl, a top of a pedestrian snarl.
I just don't think that's the way people would go. Unless there was some other performer right on Frere Street or in that area, I think, I don't think people would go that way.
Okay, so then, Gene, the map last year had a route for where people were going to drive, or, you know, a couple of different routes they could take. Is there a way on the map this time that you could differentiate places that might be destination locations, like maybe Meeting House Pond, that's not on a driving route, per se? It's, it could be on the map, just not on a designated driving route that would tend to induce people to choose that route to drive down. That might be a way to do it.
Yeah, there might be a way to designate those. Gus, last year, we didn't have a route. What we did was, we split the time, so like, all the musicians, say, north of 109 played the first hour, south of 109, they played the second hour to.
Right. I guess, I guess in my head, I created a route then.
Everybody. And last year, we had, so Mike Mason, who was a retiring teacher, played in front of Dale Street School. That was a, I mean, that was, the schools gave him permission to do that. It was another kind of area where people could park, or they could drive through and keep going. That one seemed to work out pretty well.
So, Gene, I want to thank you for doing the checklist that I was suggesting in advance of even coming here. It sounds like you've done that, so. And I would suggest that you follow up with the chief about the routes and the parking and all of those issues, because I think she's going to have a much better idea about that than, we'll all have opinions, but she'll have the expertise, I think.
Okay, but it sounds like you're not opposed to having some live music that afternoon in coordination with it at some public places, if we coordinate with the chief on that.
I'm fine with it.
I would be too, and I would say on kind of the rules and regulations, I think you've already, when I read your email, my reaction to it was, well, let's kind of wait and see what the rules are at the time, and I think that's what you're going to do. And so if we can kind of set the ground rules, you know, seven to 10 days in advance, when we know what the restrictions are going to be, I think that's a great way to do it.
Yep. Good. Okay, thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you, Gene.
Somebody say food festival. I just, I'll be right back. I want to get on the agenda for that one.
Do we need a motion or formal authorization, or?
Yes, please.
So I would move that we authorize Porch Fest for May 1st, 2021, with a rain date for May 2nd, 2021, for the specifics to be worked out between the organizers and the chief of police.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
I should apologize to Gene. When I set the agenda, I said it was at the Medfield State Hospital, because it's still in my mind, we are eventually going to pull off Porch Fest at the Medfield State Hospital, so maybe next year, Gene.
Well, it's everywhere but the Medfield State Hospital.
And Christine, while you're pulling up the next agenda item, Megan, thank you for your suggestion. If I can find that setting, I'll go there. I clicked on the wrong thing that said I was going to answer her question live, so it's now done.
So our next item for the select board is Jeffrey Pedder requests use of Meeting House Park for Beer Garden outdoor pop-up. Zulus Brewing, is it? Jeff? Hi, welcome.
How are you?
Very good. Why don't you tell us what you're proposing? A repeat of last year?
It's quite simple in many ways, yes. We're opposing a repeat of last year. I'm sorry I haven't filled any checklist, but I'm not sure what's on the checklist.
We don't have the checklist yet, so it's, it's a concept.
There are three kind of small additions to it. The, we're going to ask about the use of electrical outlets, because there may be some electrical outlets at the back end of, end of Meeting House Park.
There are. They belong to Memo.
Yeah.
Is it possible to use them? Do we have to ask?
You would need to ask Memo. It's their electrical service.
Okay.
They have it there for a Medfield Day.
Okay. And then, another question was about music, which I know is just brought up. We would like to be able to have some music there, not loud, not even necessarily amplified, but something there during the other occasions. And then the third thing is, last year, we got permission for A-frame signage. This, we were wondering if we could just put some yard signs around. We've noticed other people putting yard signs, like in people's yards and other locations where the property owners have been given permission, have given permission.
So the select board, the select board only controls the public way? And that's where we can and cannot give you permission to put your signs on private property? The private property owners need to give you permission, and we don't have control over what they do.
Okay.
Temporary signs are allowed in general. Permanent signs are, I think, a different issue, Mark, maybe.
And then I guess I can just remind you a little bit of what we did there. Generally, generally speaking, you know, we had a beer garden there. We had to, we always have to have a food vendor. We always complied by the COVID rules at the time, which tend to go up and down a little bit. As of now, the governor has just signed off. Well, it's just approved as of March 22nd for 150 people to be in a public, a public gathering outside. Now, last year, we only had 50, our contract was 50 people, which, you know, is basically satisfactory, so it wouldn't go up to 150, but all I'm saying is that currently, what we're proposing is allowed under the current guidance. All our, all our, all the food vendors would be signed off by the Board of Health. We, all the servers would be tip certified. We provide the tables and chairs. We rope off the entire area. We remove all trash and recycling, with the exception of the receptacles, which are already there. And yes, we also requested the use of sandwich boards around town. I think that's, we also try and support the local food vendors, so, you know, Rib Public or Seth's came last year. That's kind of it. And we never had any complaints. I think it was very well received, was well attended, and I think people were happy to have it there.
Yep. Did it work out well for you then?
It did, yes. Yeah, I mean, we're still heavily restricted in our taproom. We only open maybe on average once a week at the moment. We're also open if we have a food vendor. And we've been, a pizza guy comes every sort of week or so, but otherwise, we're not open.
Okay, Gus, did you have any questions or comments? Gus?
Gus is on mute.
Yeah.
I'm not doing well with my technology tonight. I don't have any questions. Seems to me that it went well last year. Jeff, I, you're one of the ones that I think of that's probably had more of a burden trying to get through this than many, because of the restrictions on your business. So if this can help you out, I think that's a good thing.
Mike?
But my only question is, is for which days are we talking about every Saturday again? Is that what we're talking about? What, it just says, what days are we talking about?
That was the plan, was to have Saturdays. Last year, there was a, there was a few days where the rain was, there was rain or bad weather on a Saturday, so we moved it to Sunday.
Okay.
And Christine was generous enough.
Okay, so starting April 3rd through November 20th.
Yes, it's a long time period.
Yeah. The only thing would be we would have to not do it. Hopefully, there will be a Medfield Day in September, right? So we'd have to not do it on Medfield Day. And so I'm perfectly comfortable with this, and it's just the, it is a long period of time. Hopefully, there will be a Medfield Day in September. I'm cautiously optimistic about that. And I'm trying to think, Christine or Peter, Gus, if there are other events that utilize Meeting House Pond. I don't know if the Unitarian Church has anything that they do on a regular basis where they would, they would use, because a portion of that property is theirs, obviously. Yeah, and so that's the only question I would have, and I guess I'd be comfortable approving this, with the exception of not Medfield Day. And I don't know which day would be Medfield Day in 2021. And so.
It used to be on a third Saturday, but I believe they've moved it up to the second Saturday.
Yeah, there was, they, they worked out a deal on, because they're trying to avoid Rosh Hashanah, and so it, I think they might be moving it to the fourth Saturday, when the third Saturday would be Rosh Hashanah, so.
Take my word for it. You can't avoid Rosh Hashanah.
Well, they're trying to avoid, avoiding having Medfield Day on Rosh Hashanah. How about that, Mark?
They keep bouncing around every year.
I know, I know, but I know that there was a concerted effort by them to look ahead and try to, try to have it not on Rosh Hashanah. Anyway, I think other than Medfield Day, but I think we should reserve the right, Jeff, to revisit on a particular Saturday, if there's some other need, some other use for it. I can't think of any, no one else can think of any, but so I would provisionally authorize it, and then we would give you notice if there was some Saturday where we can't do it. Is that fair?
That's absolutely fine with me, yeah. I mean, there would be some Saturdays we wouldn't do it anyway, because we do have other events.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sorrell, please.
I was speaking with Nick Milano earlier today about this, generally speaking, there's a lot of flexibility, given the fact that we're under the governor's emergency declaration, and the Alcoholics Beverage Control Commission has gone along with a lot of creative arrangements. If, and we're talking long-term now, hopefully less long than not, but there's a potential that the emergency declaration will be lifted. And if that happens, we may have to revisit this issue. Maybe not, maybe he just pulls one-day licenses and goes on his merry way, but just kind of a heads up.
And Pete, Pete, you know, the question, I guess, one other question, given what we just discussed with Doug Pollard about kind of the issues of fees and things like that. Do we need a similar, you know, review point, at the point that there's no restrictions, and we're back to normal, because we don't know exactly when that would happen, and this is a commitment all the way out to November? Do we want to put a, the same kind of limit in terms of the commitment on our part that we just did with Doug? Yeah, partly what I'm thinking of is that at the point that all the constraints are off, the fact that, this is no slam on you, Jeff, you've got a good spot there, and if suddenly a bunch of other businesses said, well, how come, how come it's going there and it's not going to us, and you need to give it to us for free, because that's what you're doing with everybody else, I think we could get ourselves into a bit of a bind after the restrictions all come out, which maybe corresponds with your point, Mark, about the governor's, it may be that the rules change at some point in the coming year. And it seems like you should.
So I think, Jeff, what we're saying is that we're willing to go along with it at this point, but if, when the governor changes the emergency declaration, that we may have to revisit it at that point. And I would encourage you to, and if you don't know where the line is between the town property and the church's property, that you should make sure that you have their okay too.
I do know where that line is, because, well, I know pretty well where it is, because there's a telephone pole right there, and I measured it out when we first set it up, so I pretty much know where it is.
So do you set up on the town side then, of the telephone pole?
Completely the sound town side, yes. We don't use. And I totally understand about the rules changing and, you know, totally fine with revisiting that if and when. I should say when.
Yes, yes, thank you for that optimism. Do we have a motion there?
Yes, so I would move that we authorize Zealous to use Meeting House Pond on Saturdays between 12:00 and 8:30 PM from April 3rd through November 20th, with the exception of Medfield Day, whichever Saturday in September it falls this year, subject to being revisited upon the termination of the governor's various emergency declarations related to COVID-19.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes. And then on the sandwich boards, are you looking to put them up at the designated town locations in advance of your events?
Yes, I was just going to ask clarification on the music part of it. Is, is that, are you giving permission also for some music?
I think so. I don't know if there's a separate musical authorization, but I think we're, as you have proposed it, we've authorized it.
Yep.
And sandwich boards, yes, we only have one sandwich board, and it would only be put in one of the five, I think, designated spots. We usually put it at the end of North on 109.
And do you put it on like the whole, the week ahead of times? And do you put it on like the, the whole, the week ahead of times?
Uh, yeah, we actually, last year, we kind of left it there and it got blown over in the wind at one point. But that would be the intention.
Cause we usually have a duration limit on the use of those sign locations. I think it's three or four weeks.
Okay.
Three weeks. And so I think we can authorize you um to set up the sandwich board, subject to being bumped if there's others to take your place. So if it gets too crowded, we will kick you out temporarily.
Okay, that's fine. We're, I mean, it, it's probably just to advertise it at the beginning because then people start realizing it's there.
So I would move that we authorize um Zeele's to use the location of the corner of North Street and Main Street for their sandwich board beginning on Monday, March twenty ninth uh through um. What, what, that would be Monday, April twelfth, April nineteenth, March twenty ninth through April twelfth? Or no, April nineteenth would be three weeks.
I think April nineteenth.
April through April nineteenth.
So. Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Murakuchi, yes. And then it, we can extend that beyond that as well, just to stick with our bylaw of three weeks, so we can come up for renewal afterwards. All right. Well, good luck.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you very much for your support.
Hope it goes well this year.
Good luck, Jeff.
Amy Colleran is coming next, uh, Facilities Manager, Director for the Town. She's requesting the Select Board approve for emergency expenditure from the municipal building stabilization emergency. Hi, Amy. Thanks for coming.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Okay. So what I'm looking for is approval of two projects to be funded by the Municipal Building Stabilization Emergency Fund. Both of these projects are located at the Public Safety Building. The first project is um the air compressor replacement. There's an existing compressor that's um, that's undersized um for the need. It's also, it's been tripping out constantly um is in need of replacement. So what the air compressor does, um, it fills the uh fire truck's um air compressor system uh for the brake systems. So the um, the chief has said that it's the, the existing one, um, is just not keeping up with the demands of, um, of the um, of the apparatus. So we are, um, I got some pricing um of eighty four hundred dollars to um, to fund this project. The, the issue is that how it's so high is um where the, where the unit goes. We have to hard pipe um a three-phase uh wiring system over to a new um, the new compressor, because it's, it's not a three-phase, the existing one. It's a smaller unit. Um, there is some existing pipe, so that cost could go down if we open up some of the existing piping to see if there's some room in there. But I'm sort of anticipating there won't be any room for any more wires in the existing. So that was the first um project. Does anyone have any questions?
I, I actually do. Um, is this air, did this air compressor get installed with the new building when it was built?
Yes, it did. Yes.
And it's not, there's no guarantee or warranty that covers it?
No, no, unfortunately, there is um, there was only a, a one-year warranty on the existing air compressor. So um, it is undersized and I think that's why it's failing is because it's, it's keep, it's overworking um to try to keep up with the demand. It just can't keep up with the demand of the uh, of what the uh, what, what the needs are.
Was that a design flaw? I, I'm, I'm not necessarily going to shoot people here, but is that, was that a design flaw in the building to begin with that we undersized the compressor?
I, I think so. It sounds like it just um, it just really wasn't looked into what, what the needs were for the actual um, actual apparatus. That, yeah, it seems to me that it's, it was just undersized for what the needs were.
Okay. When you get to the second one, I'm going to have the same question about warranties. So you can just.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah. But the second one's a little bit of a retrofit. So it was really something that wasn't maybe foreseen. So the second project, well, first project is eighty four hundred dollars um for the air compressor replacement, and that includes all the piping and, and wiring to the uh, to the new compressor. The second one is um, it's actually just the sheet metal work. Um, so what we're looking for, we've, we've had a lot of um issues with um leaks over. And we thought it was the roof. So we had, um, the roof has come out several times to see and we, we couldn't find any leaks. So what we've um realized is the water, rainwater is coming in through um a fresh air intake. So this more, I mean, that's, I don't think there's something that you can really um anticipate. Um, cause it's not all the time. It's not every time it rains. It's just the way a wind will blow at certain rain, um, rainstorms. So what we're looking to is just divert that um air intake um so the, the weather doesn't get into um the, the existing ductwork. So what we would do is um take the, take the existing mover off, uh, put a diverter in. So it's, it's actually sort of blowing down instead of out, if you will. Um, and then also we'll um, uh, we'll line the, the about ten feet of the outside air ductwork, just to make sure there aren't any leaks in that um exterior um run. So that cost is um sixty three hundred dollars for that project. And I, um, if you talk to the chief, we, we've had some rooms that um, the rain is getting in there so much that it's dripping on the ceiling tiles. And um, that, you know, ceiling tiles will leak so much that they're um, they're breaking in and we come in in the morning and they're all over the floor. So something needs to be done for sure. But it's, I, we don't think it's a roof. We don't think it's any kind of roof leaks. But it's definitely, um, we think it's coming in through the air, air intake, fresh air intake. Any questions on that project? It's a little different, I know, but I think it's um, I think this will, this will take care of the issue. And it's a cheaper fix than um some major roof repairs.
Same question I had before, there's no builder's warranty that covers something like this from a design standpoint?
No, not, not that. I, I don't think you could anticipate something like this. Um, again, it's just, it's certain rainfall with certain um, cer- certain times when the wind blows a certain way. I don't know how you could um anticipate that in design, my opinion.
The interior damage to the ceiling tiles, that's purely just replacing the ceiling tiles. There's no more substantive damage at this point?
No, no, just ceiling tile, um, in a mess.
Right. No more questions.
Yeah, and that was sixty three hundred dollars, the total on that project.
Mike, any questions, comments?
No, I think this, we got over this a little bit at the capital budget meeting already. So I was familiar with these requests.
So I guess my only question, uh, Amy, would be whether or not there's a possible insurance claim for the uh, the wind-driven rain part.
I didn't, I actually, I didn't think about that. Christine, what are your thoughts?
We talked briefly with uh Todd about it. We can look at it further for the ceiling tiles, but obviously they're not covering uh the air intake uh because it's a design issue, not damage. So, but we can, we can talk to him about covering the cost of the ceiling tiles. We can see what I, what that is versus what our deductible is.
Yeah, that's not much.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's small monies. But I can, I can look into see how much, how much we've used, um, how much stock we've used to see if it's worth it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if the number were bigger, um, we'd want to look harder at the design and everything else, I think. To evaluate, the insurance is a separate question, but to evaluate the design issue in more detail. I don't necessarily disagree with you, Amy, but just that for sixty three hundred dollars would probably cost you almost that just to figure out if, if you did have some kind of claim on it.
Absolutely.
So I, I, I have, I have no issue with it.
Okay.
Do we have a motion then?
Yep, I would move that we authorize um appropriations for the Municipal Building Stabilization Emergency Fund for eighty four hundred dollars to replace the existing air compressor and for sixty three hundred dollars for the repair to divert rainwater and avoid the leaks as requested.
Second.
Mr. Peterson?
Yep.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Murakuchi, yes.
Thanks, Amy.
Great. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, we next have uh Scott McDermott, Town Moderator, to discuss twenty twenty one annual town meeting. Hi, Scott.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Scott.
This has been very informative. I have some great ideas around uh town meeting quorum, including beer gardens and food festivals and porch fest kinds of ideas. So I think we do, we're off to a running start to get our quorum. How's everybody?
Good ideas. Food always is, is, gets people to a meeting, Scott. Sir Posa sent me to a um, a meeting. It was a, a course on how to run a good meeting, put on by the Metropolitan Area Planning Committee. And, and there were two things. One, make it fun. And two, provide food. So, 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 make the annual town meeting fun and feed people.
Scott, did I just hear you suggest we're going to have a beer garden for the three hours before each night of the town meeting?
I, you know. It seems like you guys have mechanisms in place to make those kinds of things happen. So uh, I, I just, it's outside of my purview, but uh, no, well, it's great to be here and it's uh, here we are in March and beginning to think about uh May. So I don't know, uh, Christine, whether you know, I don't, in terms of setting the, this is the initial discussion around the orchestration of our, you know, our twenty twenty one annual town meeting. I think we know our, you know, our history. We, on June twenty sixth of last year, you know, we uh conducted a town meeting that uh, I think was appropriately right-sized to the essential items that we needed to address. I had a sense, you know, at that meeting that we might be meeting again in the fall for a special town meeting. Uh, but because of the cooperation and some good work and also just the, the way things uh worked out, uh, we didn't, we didn't do that. So we're now going to be full circle here to the next uh annual town meeting. Uh, which has some, has some pertinence because we, you know, we had kind of intentionally, I think, limited uh, you know, uh, some discussion around certain issues that have been kind of on the, you know, on the plate for, for a while. And maybe therefore would need a, a little bit more time to be discussed at, at this town meeting. So I guess the issue's at hand, and I'm, I'm looking at Mark because um, you know, I, I could use a little guidance associated with the, the question of, of the, the date of our town meeting. We know that we are, we are scheduled by charter for Monday, May third, so the first Monday of May. Um, I also looked up today, uh, tried to look at data in terms of uh high and low temperatures at the beginning of May versus the end of May. And May is a month in which things do change. So the deeper into the month you go, as you get to the end of the May, the average is nine degrees uh, uh higher in terms of the high for the day and nine degrees higher for the low of the day as we go through the month. I, I had said to uh Christine, to the extent that um, it would be, uh, it, it might be prudent to think about pushing the, the town meeting back. So that would be one question to frame here tonight. I mean, it, it, to the extent that we have the authority to do it of the selectmen, I, I think have the authority to be able to do that. Whether we would want to choose a date that was later, either the uh, just before, the week before Memorial Day. So that would be around the twenty third of uh, of May, I believe. And then uh, the other option would be to, you know, would be to postpone it for one month and do it the, the, the first Monday in June. Now, the other issue, so that's, so the, the, the timing of it is one issue. And the second issue is looking at the, the warrant that has been framed, although I know that there's continuing movement on, on, on some of the articles, whether we should be thinking about uh doing this in one session or two. I think it's only been two times that in advance that, that we've actually established a plan to do it in, in two sessions. And that brings with it uh some appropriate complexities to provide the kind of equity and fairness around the articles and to drive the quorum that we would like to have on consecutive sessions. You know, that makes those uh topics very pertinent to, you know, our consideration. So I think, and I don't know whether that's where we want to go to tonight, that, you know, the, the, the question of the date, I think it is. And I'd be interested in your thoughts, uh, and then some thinking about based on uh the agenda as it comes before us by, based on the, the list of Warren articles that I saw uh today. Uh, you, you know, people's thinking about whether uh they think in, in, you know, in a single session, we could provide uh appropriate treatment for all of those articles. And then we have, then we have a series of other considerations, obviously, we, we associated with conducting an, an outside town meeting. I don't know, Christine, whether you had a chance to be able to connect with the schools about those particular timeframes.
I have not had a chance to talk to Michael about that yet. Uh, just concerned about what other events are happening on the field at that time.
Right. You know, if we were to, because if we were to, we would need a setup and then we would need, if we did two nights or two days. One, you know, one prospect, uh, you know, in the past, we've, you know, the meeting was Monday. And if we were to continue to us, to a second night, it was always the following Tuesday. That had to do with uh gym setup and uh, and also just kind of a judgment that it might be easier to, to keep the momentum going and come back with a quorum the next night on the Tuesday following the Monday. I think going back uh farther into the past, uh, when they, um, when a, when a town meeting was put over to a second session, they did it the following Monday night. So that's, we, there's no real precedent to establish the most recent precedent. I mean, having been established, the most recent precedent is that if we had to go two nights, we would go back to back. The other, the other possibility after a very successful Saturday afternoon town meeting was, would we go to a town meeting on a weekend? Um, I, Christine and I were talking, I, I expressed some uh support for the idea of perhaps doing something on a Sunday afternoon. And uh, if that were to require a second session, we would do that on, on Monday evening. So those are, those are the, some of the questions. Mark, why don't you speak to the question about just the, the date itself and uh what is permitted relative to the, you know, to, to the charter and special legislation and so forth for the selectmen to be able to, to move the date and the constraints that we have? I know we have to get it done by June thirtieth, right?
Right. The same, the same, the same statute allows the selectmen uh to push back the meeting original, the initial scheduling of the meeting. So they can schedule it anytime up till, as long as, as long as it's held and all the businesses of these, of the annual is concluded by June thirtieth. That was what was relieved by the special, I shouldn't say special, but the emergency legislation that passed last year that we ended up operating under, opened that up so that you didn't have to have your businesses concluded by June thirtieth. But we're back to, uh, we're back to the statutes that existed pre-COVID. And I'm hearing all kinds of uh rumors about what may or may not happen at the legislative level. So for now, I think we look at the statutes as they exist and go from there.
Okay. I was just getting a sense of the room here, uh, you know, among the selectmen, any sense of uh how, how you think about the, setting the date for the, for the meeting in light of what Mark has just kind of said that we do have some flexibility?
I can think of uh, in terms of temperatures, I, I remember when it snowed a half a foot on uh March seven or something, not March, May seven. The, the leaves were out on the, on the maple trees. Uh, and I can remember running a marathon uh on, on Patriots Day when it was ninety degrees. So I, it's just going to be a, a crapshoot at, at, at that time of year, I think. So I guess you get much more predictable weather if you put it off for several weeks.
Is there any, from an executive perspective or Christine, from a kind of administrative perspective, is there any disadvantage to putting the town meeting at a later date? In terms of, I know perhaps it might actually be easier to, to digest some of the work that the Warren Committee is doing and, and go through the process and make the recommendations. Are any, any, is there any downside or disadvantage to postponing it?
None that I can think of. I don't think the Warren Committee would ever turn down, you know, two or three extra weeks to, you know, to finish their work. It would allow us to make sure that all of their recommendations are included in the warrant report rather than being heard at town meeting. I, I can't think of any downside other than I know everybody was excited to get back to normal this year and get back on. I, I can't think of any downside other than I know everybody was excited to get back to normal this year and get back on our regular schedule. But what we're talking about, I don't think puts us off that far. So I, I'm okay with it if the selectmen are.
Christine, does that, that extends to whether it's May or June, the month?
Yeah, as long as we're done by June 30th, I, I think, you know, we're fine in our perspective. I think the only reason why I think we're looking for a decision tonight, or as close to possible to a decision, is because right now the warrant hearing is scheduled for March 23rd. If we were going to extend it, then we would most likely extend the warrant hearing for a couple of weeks to give the Warren Committee a little more time.
So I, I would say for, for me, I think I don't, wouldn't want to push it past. That Monday before Memorial Day, so past May 24th. I mean, I think you're going to get it, it will be warmer and then suddenly it'll be too hot. And I mean, we, we got through doing it on a Saturday afternoon. Last year with a relatively short agenda, it still took two hours. I think it's likely that, that town meeting will be longer this year. So if we're looking at starting a town meeting, let's say at five or 5:30, so we can have mostly daylight and in front of the field, we can turn the lights on, but we can have mostly daylight. I would be concerned if it was in June, if we did have a couple of really hot days, I think your, your best shot for, for temperate weather is going to be in May. And my preference would be to stick with what we've done of late, which is to start on Monday night. And if we need to extend to then do it on Tuesday night, subject to the availability of the field and, and not look at pushing it off for a week. And I, I, I think that could just, you know, that could cause a number of, of issues. I think coming back the next night is the, is the way to go. So. And I was thinking in, in my mind, that we'd be pushing it off two weeks and doing it on May 19th and 20th if we needed to. There's no magic to that of, of doing it on, you know, May 26th as well.
Seventeenth and 18th.
Seventeenth and 18th. Yeah, I'm horrible in the calendar. You just have a calendar in front of me before I start saying these things.
Yep.
Completely, completely off.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Sorrell.
That historical pushing it off a week. Was function of the fact that there was also requirements in the charter for notice of the continuation that was supposedly a posting and everything else. And then we moved it up and then found that, that, that notice and posting was kind of overlooked and. Bond Council picked up one year that it was a requirement if it went to a second night that you had to post and give notice and all that. But it's all been corrected now.
All right. What, how about a, a, a reaction to the notion of doing something on a Sunday afternoon at two o'clock?
Mark, didn't you say there was blue laws that interfered with that?
We double checked, I, we double checked. I reached out to my colleagues in the Municipal Lawyers Association and the, and the consensus is it's not a problem.
I do, I do know that last year that as towns were going to weekend afternoons, that there was a kind of a cross section of towns that did Saturday and Sunday. So I, whatever, whatever can be drawn from that is, is kind of what I was observing last, last June. And then talking to other moderators, so. But I, I have no, you know, starting, there will be objections. Whether it's, you know, would be a Saturday or a Sunday or starting early at 5:30 on a, on a Monday, which. You know, can, for some people under normal circumstances, you know, that would be perhaps a conflict or an inconvenience. And that, so anyway, that's, that's, that's the question of the date. And then the second question is a kind of a preordained two night town meeting. So where in that instance, what you would do. If there was a strong sense that we couldn't get the, do all of the articles in a single evening, is that we would determine after the consent calendar, which articles would need to be addressed. In advance of other articles, and then we would probably create two slates of articles and then by lottery, pick each slate to determine which one would appear on the first night or the second night.
Scott, is there, Scott, is there a reason why it has to be by lottery? Or as a moderator, can you specify the sequencing? Assuming that.
No, no, there's no requirement that it has to be by lottery. I mean, when I first started doing it, it was more of a pure lottery. And then I said, well, this isn't very efficient because. For a number of reasons. We had people who were coming back up to the mic, who had been at the mic before and all of that. And it's, so we started to do what I call linkage. So we linked together certain articles as a matter of, you know, efficiency and effectiveness in terms of dealing with them. And we started positioning certain articles at certain places in the, you know, the town meeting and then left the rest of them open to a lottery. Of course, the big fear is that if you. If, if, if you don't plan for a two night meeting and you use the lottery is that what you get is some orphans at the end of the required timeframe, or when people run out of gas and you end up with. A couple of articles that are left, you don't have the time to conduct them and they're not the kind of articles that would help you to draw a. A, a quorum the next night. So that's the biggest concern. Now, if we started at 5:30 and we had the same time constraints that we have in the gym, which is for me to make a declaration at 10:15 about whether we can get it done by quarter to 11, we would have more time. But I think we would run out of perhaps. Patience, and I'm not sure it's fair to keep people sitting outside on a, on a May evening from 5:30, much beyond, you know, a couple of hours at a time. I think it's. Depending on whether we have to be considerate of, you know, folks who will turn out. So that points to, to the fact that we say, you know, that it'll be in two nights, it'll be at. 5:30 on Monday and 5:30 on Tuesday, they'll, we'll identify the slates and then we would choose a slate and then articles would be assigned to each of those evening. The slates would be designed to be somewhat balanced in terms of interest and scope. Magnitude. And so that's part of the idea would be to not load everything up on, 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 on one night. And we have, we have a variety of things that are going to draw our attention beyond the budgets, the budget this year, but we also, within the budget. Context, we have the work we're doing on the, on the capital budget. We've got a big item with the water treatment plant. And as we, as we go down, we have property dispositions. I think the Medfield Energy Committee is looking for some time. You know, they've been patient around getting on to the town meeting agenda. Got a bunch of planning board considerations, which usually don't take too, too much time. But then of course, we have the two citizen petitions that come along. And then, you know, we have some. Random items having to do with, you know, the things that I think that people will want to speak to. So it does seem like to me that what we have framed up is something that on, on an outdoor evening in the middle of May, might be a lot to try to digest in one night. And that we, we might want to be thinking about a, you know, as I said, a preordained two night town meeting. With a balanced slate and, and, you know, the hope there would be that we would get a very committed group of people to. Participate in town meeting after last year's abbreviated town meeting, who would, who would turn out for a couple nights and enable us to be able to get a, a quorum of 250 people two nights in a row.
I know when the mosquito, when does the mosquito season start?
Well, it started already, depending on the weather.
Well, so, so Scott, I'm, I'm wrestling with your thought of the Sunday afternoon. Versus two nights during the week that will extend into the, you know, into the evening. And trying to size up how people react to several hours outside at night in May. Where mosquito, you know, again, probably partly depending on the weather leading up to those dates in terms of what kind of a mosquito population we have, but.
I think that some working parents with school kids have trouble coming to the evening town meetings on Monday night. So I, I guess I would encourage you to think about maybe doing it on a weekend, maybe a Sunday, Monday combination.
It's kind of where my head was going.
If I might just point out for what it's worth, that the president is saying that by May, everyone who wants a vaccine will have one available.
So you're saying it might be an indoor meeting?
Yeah.
Well.
Outdoors, outdoors has already been decided.
Okay.
Yeah.
By, by who Christine? State?
No, us.
All right. Oh, you. Okay.
Yeah, I, I think even if, look, I mean, it's, hopefully everything's going to be a lot better in May. I, I think. 500 people in the gym is probably one of the last things that will happen. So I think that would be very optimistic. I mean, probably if he's saying we'll all have the vaccine by May, we'll probably all have it by the end of March, given. The expectation setting that he engages in, but it's good news anyway. And so we should, but I think we should be planning on the outside. I mean, we should not do it on Saturday again. And, you know, my concern on Sunday would be if there are any religious denominations represented in town who would have, you know, an equivalent Sabbath observance to the, the Jewish Sabbath on Saturdays, where they would not be able to participate in the Sunday town meeting. And so I would, my, my preference would be to go Monday to Tuesday. I think there's challenges for everybody getting to town meeting. And maybe someday we will, we'll schedule a town meeting by time and location by a doodle pole. That's most convenient for everyone or the town moderator will go door to door. And solicit input from people when they can and sort of get on their calendar to decide when they can participate for a couple hours in the legislative activity of the town. But I think for now. Our democracy should be sufficiently important that people can come to town meeting and make it there at 5:30 on a Monday. And it's going to present challenges for everybody, but. People seem to rise to the occasion. I think people seem to rise to the occasion with, for school parents instead of babysitting and those kinds of things when that happens. So I think we can figure it all out. So I, I would say we should, my view would be a Monday at a five or a 5:30 and the same thing on Tuesday. And, and to try, we can try. I mean, I think we, we can set it up, we're planning on two nights, but. Here's the order, and if we're faster than we expect, maybe we'll just stick it out till 10 o'clock or 10:30 and get it done. And, and then that second slate, Scott, as you say, maybe get, gets done the first night if we're fast enough. If not, we come back and, and do the remaining ones on the second night. That would be my take on it.
Do you have a preference yourself, Scott?
是我的 preference. I, I, you know, I, I was, the weather was, was a factor in, you know, in the mid part of May, in the evenings. And. The. I agree with Mike though, that, you know, this is, this is one of the participatory self-democracy, you know, is, is, is not always easy. This is what we do to, to govern ourselves. And this is what constitute our, you know, the legislative branch of our town government. So we want to give that. You know, it's very, very, very important. I, I do think. It is a little tricky the way that the, the articles need to be established. If you, if you, if you're going to use a lottery. And you're going to get to the end of the first night and be making a decision, it'll be a more complicated decision than just by time. I think it'll be a, a decision that would, would have to take into account. You know, the relative comfort of the people that we're looking at out there, sitting there, if they're all wrapped up in shawls or if it's, you know, so.
I mean, my, my suggestion, Scott, I mean, I, but it would be, I mean, it, not that you can always predict what's going to be, you know, the subject of great discussion. But if you could almost think of it in terms of, of kind of two chunks of the most. Interesting or, or articles that are most likely, and then one would be backloaded. And you would kind of have in between them, sort of more routine articles. So if you're looking at it on Monday night, you could say, look, we can get through these routine articles and then we'll, we'll have all blockbusters on Tuesday night to come back. And then you can also gauge it. Look, if it's, if it's seven o'clock and we're through the first set, all right, we're going to try to finish everything tonight. That way you have, you know, you have like the main event, you've got, you know, you have the Bruce Springsteen at the back of coming in of all the articles. So. I think something like that might work and you could work with the order upfront with the idea that you keep some of the main attractions for the end under any circumstances. And that way. You don't have, have the issue of the quorum on the second night, but you at least have some flexibility to get through as much as we can on, on the first night.
So Mike, is that idea, is that idea, there's two slates and within each slate, there's a lottery or?
Well, I think you would make, you might have multiple slates with the idea that, you know, if slates one and two are the ones that are kind of the, going to most likely to have the most discussions, those, those will be separate. And maybe you'll flip them as to which way they go or what have you. You know, I think what we want to avoid though, is you want to avoid having a town meeting on either night that's sort of unrepresentative. In the sense that everybody who's interested in one comes to one and everybody who's interested in the other comes to the other. And you have come with like two different legislative bodies passing on, on articles that are supposed to be one town meeting. So I, I don't know if it's, it's. How it would work if it would be two slates or four slates or, you know, six slates and you kind of slot those through. And you can kind of almost like a, like a jigsaw puzzle. Okay, we've gotten through three tonight, we're going to do three tomorrow night. But you have in each group enough that'll keep people, keep people in this, in their seats and, and keep people engaged and keep the town meeting generally representative of the town. As, or at least of the, the people who, from the town who want to come to town meeting for all, all of the articles.
So let me just ask at this point, whether we have an agreement that, that we're going to do this at the end of May, the weekend before Memorial Day?
The only thing is we need a rain date. So I'm just wondering if we're, if we're going to stick to the Monday, Tuesday, should we go the 17th and 18th with a rain date of the 24th and the 25th?
Or the 24th and 25th with a rain date of the 7th and 8th?
17th and 18th.
No, 7th and 8th of June, 24th, 25th of May, 7th, 8th of June. That would actually be two weeks apart though, now that I think about it. That's probably not a great idea.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to keep them closer together.
Yeah.
And before Memorial Day, before we, you know, lose anybody for the summer holiday.
Yep.
I mean, the issue would be, I mean, you're not going to be able to keep it. Set up anyway, because chances are, even if you, you're, you can kind of keep people off the field for Monday and Tuesday, you're not going to keep them off for a full week.
Yeah.
And so you're going to be dismantling it anyway. So I think the fact that it's two weeks apart isn't necessarily that big a deal because it's.
Let me throw one more curveball. Let's say it's a two, it's a two night town meeting. It doesn't rain on the 17th, it does rain on the 18th. Then it would be the 24th.
Or, or the 19th. Yeah.
It's also, honestly, once, once we pick our starting point, we need to start working with our vendors to the outdoor meeting to make sure that we're able to get them in there. That, that's the other concern why we need to move quickly on this is because we need to start booking our sound people. Because we're not the only ones planning the outdoor town meeting again this year. So we'll need to fit that into.
So Gus, Gus, are you willing to give up on the Sunday?
Yeah, no, I, I didn't have a strong opinion. I was.
Yeah, I don't either.
I was raising an issue that I could see how that could be a problem. You know, generally speaking, doing, after last year, I kind of said, no, we just probably want to stay away from weekends in general. But I hadn't automatically assumed a nighttime meeting outside a year from there, so.
So why don't we plan on Monday, Tuesday? And, and, and then it's just a question of picking which one, the 17th, 18th or 24th and 25th?
I don't have a strong, would we not be allowed to meet on Memorial Day? Is that right?
Correct.
You cannot.
It's a legal holiday.
I don't have a strong view either. Yeah, but I have a slight view, I guess, for whatever, I'm not even sure why. I like, I like the 17th and 18th better, but I think that just has to do with getting this over and done with. With maximum flexibility to react if it's necessary, but.
I, I think that's as good a reason as any.
Yeah. So why don't we pick the 17th and 18th if that works for you, Scott, then?
All right. Do we need to put it on a separate agenda to vote to move the town meeting? So we'll put that for next week's agenda to vote to move the town meeting to the 17th and 18th.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Plus presumes that I, I'm, I'm re-elected on the 29th, so.
Yes, it does, Scott.
Otherwise you could.
You might have to start from scratch. I was thinking Mike's comment about Scott going door to door. We should at least pass some ordinance that lets him carry his nomination papers for the next year. Kill two birds with one stone.
And everybody else is at the same time.
Yeah.
Thanks, by the way, for all of those who are, you know, on the screen and beyond, who helped me out this year in getting those nomination papers. Used to be as easy as, you know, a couple of, of great contacts and/or go into a varsity basketball game. I haven't seen that many people in one room. I guess the last time I saw a crowd was the, was the town meeting in June. So thanks to everybody that helped out with the, with that. It was actually my 20th time that I had to collect signatures. I had done it twice for Park and Rec and this was the 18th time I had done it for, for a moderator. So.
It flies when you're having fun, Scott. 18 years.
18 years.
You should go for a three year term.
I like.
Another Warren article.
I've always thought that the check and balance was, you know, was brilliant because, you know, in running the meeting, the way it was originally structured. The changes you made, it's for the next meeting and that's the, that's the check. And it gives it actually gives the moderator a little bit more. Room, right? Mark, you know, to mean for, for the latitude of being able to, you know, have the, the authority to be able to make, make decisions and you're not.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it selfishly. It's, it's one third less times I have to be out there. Founding the pavement to get signatures.
Yes. Mark, is your term three years?
Yes.
Oh, all right. So we can change that then.
Yeah.
All right, Scott. Well, thank you very much for coming. Is there anything else?
No, appreciate, appreciate all, all that you guys are all doing. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I've mentioned many, many times, but I'm, I'm just struck by, maybe you see it even more clearly. When it's on Zoom, I would throw out, uh, the same kind of praise to the warrant committee. I've, I've been a lot of their Zoom calls. And, but all these other, all these other town committees and the activities of our, you know, our, our staff, but also all of the people who have continued over the course of the last year to keep town government moving so well. You know, I think it's really a tribute to, uh, you know, to Medfield, but also to a lot of these folks who make. You know, great contributions as you folks do to, you know, week over week. So it's, it's been. Very impressive to watch and, uh, you know, it's what I think helps to differentiate us as a community. So I appreciate all that you guys do.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Take care. And we'll take that as mainly compliments for Christine, but.
Yes.
Hey, she's the one who decides what dates and where they're going to be inside or outside. We're just, we're just figureheads here.
Hey, when you're physically in the building, you can make those decisions.
All the real levers of power at town hall.
Who, who do you think's controlling your video tonight, Gus?
I know. Working all day long, all day long.
Chris, could you mute him now too, please?
Not only that, but my heat went out 10 minutes before this meeting.
That's to keep the meeting shorter, Gus. Okay. Uh, our next, uh, agenda item is just under discussions, COVID-19 status update, CARES funding update. Chris, anything on that?
No, we're going to actually move right into the operating update for this evening.
All right. So budgets.
Yes. Nick's actually going to, uh, put the budget sheet up and then I just have some, an overview before we start to go. I want to highlight a few things. So when we first presented this budget, uh, to you back in January, uh, we had a preliminary estimate, um, approximately a $2 million deficit. And we've been working, uh, since January to refine our projections. And we kept two goals in mind, uh, that the selectman made clear a, at the end of last year's town meeting, and that was. Fund the capital budget and to meet our financial policy. The current budget that I'm sharing with you, the update from March 2nd now brings our deficit down, uh, to a little over 421,000. And there are two reasons, uh, that can be cited for this reduction down from the 2 million. One is on Friday, the capital budget committee recommended the creation of a capital stabilization fund. And recommended using $750,000 in free cash to create that fund. So we're proposing 992,500 in free cash be used for the capital budget. For the capital stabilization fund, excuse me, to fund our $42,500 obligation to the OPEB trust and to transfer $200,000 into stabilization. We also received a reduction in health insurance costs this year and that we were able to put in a 6.6% decrease from our 22 preliminary estimate. Town employee premiums are going to decrease, uh, by 0.6% this year in fiscal year 22. Maya is also providing us a one month premium holiday for active plan members. So the town and our membership will see a one month holiday premium this fall. But I want to emphasize that this is a one-time savings. You will see the budget increase. It actually amounts to about $295,000 for the town that saves us a month. This should not be anticipated for next year's budget. This will be, uh, automatically included in next year's budget. I can't emphasize enough, this is a one-time payment. Um, so let me just highlight a few things that have changed, uh, since we started and let me start with the revenue side. Okay. So construction activity in Medfield has continued. So we have been working the financial team to increase. And Yvonne has increased our new growth projection, um, from 425,000 to 475. And as we're moving forward and we're watching our local receipts, we promised you we would go back and look at our local, um, our local receipts. We've increased those by 98,000. We're seeing an increase in economic activity and the more we talk about reopening and moving forward, um, post-COVID, uh, we feel comfortable increasing this estimate. In the revenue side, you'll also see that we're using the 992,000, uh, of free cash to fund the items I mentioned earlier. On the expense side. So as I just discussed, health insurance, we were able to reduce this budget, uh, by 6.6%. So we brought that down. In terms of departmental budgets, I want to highlight the major changes that we've had. So we had minimal increases in our departmental budgets and most are due to steps, uh, for town employees. But I'd like to highlight a few things that look a little odd to you. The first one being the human resources budget with a 483% increase. As you know, we did not fund, uh, any non-union salary increases last year and we did not have a merit pool for department heads. We started this budget with a 2% increase, uh, accounted for in that line item. So if the board of selectmen and the personnel board approve and move forward with a 2% cost of living. That 160,000 will be divided up into, uh, individual departmental budgets. So for purposes of this, we hold it in this one line item. We've also had a small change to the facilities budget. And that includes, uh, two maintenance contracts that had an increase and we've also included $20,000. Uh, I do remember we met with the energy committee and we said we would try and find, uh, the money to fund a consultant for energy services for them. So that is included in here as well. In terms of fire operations, we have recently, uh, come to an agreement with the fire department on a two-year contract that is reflected in here. In terms of our streetlight budget, we have reduced that by $20,000 and that is how we are funding. The energy consultant in the facilities budget. We've had an increase, uh, in solid waste. And that includes a, a transfer into from the equipment repair budget as well as some increased costs for our recycling. The board of health budget has been increased. The board of health strongly advocates for hiring a full-time public health nurse. We currently use the services of the Walpole, uh, Natick VNA. And the cost of that position included in this budget is $75,000. I should mention that's the only new position included in this budget. We did not restore any of the positions that we eliminated in the fiscal year 21 budget. And that was two full-time and three part-time positions. We also received our vocational school assessment, um, and that has been reduced by, uh, $90,000 due to fewer Medfield students. So when we present this to you today with a $421,000 deficit, I do want to point out there are some small, uh, items in here that are still, need to be addressed. We have not settled the town administrator contract. We have a police contract extension. And we're finalizing our police bargaining in our COVID stipends. But as presented to you today, this budget funds our capital budget. Our capital stabilization fund, I should say, it also meets the reserve goals of seven and a half percent of our expenditures. And it meets the free cash balance requirement of two and a half percent of our expenditures as well. So we'd like to present this to you. We have not presented this full, um, worksheet to the warrant committee yet. I wanted to give the board of selectmen a chance to look at it. This is your budget. We are looking for guidance as to how you would like us to proceed with the cuts for the 421,284.
Gus, do you want to react first?
Uh, yeah, I'll start with a question though, Christine. Last year when we. Made, when we, when we basically, uh, you know. Abandoned our financial policies in order to pull funds out of reserves with the understanding that if additional funds came to the town. Later it would go back into those reserves. Is the restoration of what we took out of the reserves last year? Added in in terms of what's going back into the reserves this year?
Um, yes, we can. If there's going to be an additional transfer to stabilization, uh, over and above what's in here, then yes, you would restore what was taken out.
That's what, so my question right now, I think you said there was 200,000 going to stabilization. That's been kind of our normal contribution.
Correct.
What I'm getting at is the money that we agreed to take out of our reserve funds last year. To, to take some of the sting out of last year's cuts, which I understood why we did it. I also thought we said we were going to put that money back in if we got additional aid, which we did.
We were talking about if we received additional federal stimulus. As you remember, we met in September and we talked about the, uh, additional state aid that came to us, which was broken down, uh, 560,000 in chapter 70 and $115,000 in unrestricted government aid. We agreed at the meeting in September that we would use that to fund the deficit, uh, from COVID for the fiscal year 21 school budget. They anticipate going over what was appropriated at town meeting.
So did we make any commitment at all when the town budgets were cut actually backwards? Was there no, I, I think I had lumped up personally, I think I'd lumped that all in. They said, if more money is coming in, then we're going to restore. The, the places that we've, we've taken the, the, you know, the hardest hits in order to keep the rest of the budget afloat. Uh, I maybe should have been more diligent, making sure I understood what those agreements were. Uh, but is there anything? Is there any action being taken to restore the actual negative growth of the town budgets last year?
If you make an additional appropriation to our stabilization account, we can do that. We can, we can look at the reserve policy and you can see what's, what's available to do that.
And we should have, I mean, based on this budget, we should be able to make an additional contribution to stabilization and still meet our free cash. There's, there's still room left, Gus, to, to add additional money to stabilization.
That's, those are the reassuring words I wanted to hear, Mike.
Yeah. No, there's, there's at least, there's a decent chunk that we can do. And on the OPEB, Christine, um, for the OPEB total. Is, is that again, a combination of free cash, tax levy and sewer, water and sewer?
Uh, let me look.
Yeah, we, um. The 10% increase will be paid by free cash and then the base amount, which is 425, will be paid from the tax levy as well as some allocated costs coming from water and sewer enterprise.
Yeah. Okay. So it's the same breakdown.
Yep.
Yes, it's just an additional 4250.
And basically that represents a return to our original policy for funding OPEB. It's just that we're, you know, last year we, we didn't do it. The, we didn't do the increase last year. We're just. Going back on down the track again at the rate that we had anticipated this year, which is.
Right.
What I, I think that's, that's right.
Right. And then I think for some, for the employees, Gus, and obviously everybody took zeros last year, but for those who kind of had to keep coming in and being on the front line, we aren't providing that COVID stipend.
Right.
Which will soften some of that blow.
Right. And on that point, the Christine, I understand that. Uh, there were some un, undetermined increases, your contract, other contracts. Where, where will that money come from? Is it, it's not in here. If I heard you right, that's not actually in. I'm not, I'm not talking about specific amounts. I'm not talking to pre, but it seems there should be. A, a provision made, it's a reasonable provision to cover contract increases that we can reasonably anticipate. Uh, and in the absence of doing that, then my question is where would that money come from? If we haven't, we haven't built it into the budget, then how are we going to fund this website?
So we're still investigating the two ways we would fund the two existing contracts. I believe we can do it with inside the, the budget that we have now. I am.
So it's already there. Okay. All right. As long as it's, as long as we're not putting our box in ourselves in. Okay.
Those are the two contracts I have included, uh, a sum of money. I think we're very close on the police agreement. So I have included, uh, the agreement in the money for the agreement does exist.
Okay. Okay. And as, uh, Mike and Pete, for your benefit, I, I am still working on my. Normal scoring sheet. Nick has sent some stuff back. I think Nick and Yvonne, uh, took what I had figured out from the data, from the information I had. Fixed all the errors and things I got wrong, but when I just did a quick look at that before the meeting, I think that I will. I'll, I'll need to understand some of the ramifications of that. And I'd, I'd ask Mike and Pete, you can see what I got, but I. If you want to give me one go around to try to understand it, then, then I can get that to you and. You can throw darts at it or do whatever you want with it, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, did you have comments, reactions?
No, this is a lot of progress. I, I think we should be able to, to eliminate the rest of the, as you know, I don't like to, to use the term deficit to refer to this, the, the gap between the current departmental requests and our projected revenues. But I think we can eliminate this deficit by reducing, you know, budgets that are on here and we don't need to. And, and we can succeed in sort of weaning ourselves off of free cash for operations, hopefully permanently, um, through this, this budget, which would be a positive. Step in the right direction. I think there are some of these monetary articles and asks that, um. We can talk about, for example, with respect to the affordable housing trust operations. You know, I want to have a discussion with my fellow members of that board. I'm not sure we need to do that this year. And I think what I would probably propose on that is if we are knock on wood successful in selling the Hinkley South property. Suggesting that some of the proceeds for that be put into the affordable housing trust in next year's budget. The rest of it under our financial policy will go into a reserve, one of our reserve accounts, but, um, that, that would be how I would, would deal with that. Issue, um, because I don't know that we necessarily need it, but that, that's a small. Amount, but my view is we should keep working with the warrant committee and with the school committee and otherwise to get the debt number, get the deficit to zero. I think we're in range of being able to, to do that. And then I would, I would say that, that the plan should be to. Within our policies maximize that contribution stabilization, um. Which would make up for last year, not having put anything into it. Because, uh, we're going to get, uh, our bonds rated, uh, in the next, you know, nine months or so, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Um, I'm. Just have the reaction that I'm very pleased to see this budget compared to the other ones with the, the $2 million gap. Um, and I am happy to hear my colleagues who know much more about the budgeting process than I do. Say that, uh, that they think there are ways of making it work. So I'm, I think we're in good shape then. So. Anything else, Chris?
No, we'll proceed and, uh, present this at the warrant committee on Monday.
Okay.
And just procedurally, I mean, we don't have a number yet on the, the school budget deficit. But we'll have to go through that at some point on kind of what the remaining funds are for and what the actual number is going to be. And what that, that number will be for.
Right. We'll have to address that with the article that's.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll need to go through that budget, that, that, that piece of it in some detail, but obviously. Opening the schools is a priority. So for the town.
Okay. Um, Chris, how about the annual town meeting warrant articles? Was there things there you wanted to focus on?
I would just like to go through the warrant quickly with everyone to make sure everybody is on the same page with these articles moving forward and just to give you an update on the ones that I've pulled off. So just starting, if you want to, uh, stop me when we have a, a question. And several of these will also be on the consent calendar, but you know, article one will accept our annual reports. Two is perpetual care for the cemetery. Three is our annual revolving fund expenditure limit. Four, peg access and cable related funds, elected official compensation, personnel administration plan. Article seven is appropriate funds for the fiscal year 21 school budget COVID-19 deficit. Our operating budget, municipal building capital stabilization fund. We have an article to transfer the MSBA Dale Street reimbursement funds that have come to us into the capital stabilization fund.
What's that? No, do we know, what is the amount there, Christine?
Are we a little over 300, Nick?
It's, I think it's like 150. We just got an additional reimbursement. Um, I can send that to you once I pull it up.
I was just trying to get a ballpark figure in terms of bigger than a breadbox, smaller than a bar and that's all. I was just trying to get a ballpark figure in terms of bigger than a breadbox, smaller than a bar, and that's all.
I don't know why 340 is in my, my head on that one.
I think that might be the maximum we can get.
Maybe that was.
At the end. I don't think we've gotten it there, but we've gotten a few chunks of it. It's, it's, it's a six-figure number.
Okay, okay, that's good.
We're looking for a creation appropriation uh for the capital stabilization fund, our capital budget.
Okay, uh, can I just, if I understand that capitalization stabilization, when it's funded out of this, it's. It would be established at three quarters of $1 million is the, is the annual amount, starting, starting annual amount.
So this would be the starting amount for this year, then we need to determine a funding amount for following years. Um. And we'll present.
So what is this year's article? What, uh, uh, my comparison is what we did for the building fund.
Yeah, so when we did the building fund, we did an override vote.
Right.
Uh, we agreed, the capital budget committee agreed, same as last year, that this was not the year for an override vote to create this, so that's why we recommended funding it with free cash for the first year. And I would anticipate a recommendation um from that committee at some point for a $500,000 override. To create that uh account similar to the municipal building stabilization fund.
So that, so it, it, it's the issue of saying this is account that we're creating this year. It, and I was tying the other one to the creation of the account was with the override. Are we saying that? We're funding this account at this amount this year? And we will attempt to create the override to fund it on a permanent basis next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, or Gus, as we, and the other potential source and, and you know, the numbers we originally had talked about were higher.
Yep.
Is if we are successful in turning some of our town land into revenue producing.
Yep.
Um, assets under our financial policies, all of the revenue from those types of. Of leases all goes into some sort of stabilization account or some sort of permanent reserve.
Right.
Um, and, and it's not available for, for operations. And so that would be another way to fund it. That's why it's a lower number. Because I think we're anticipating being able to fund it with something other than a dedicated tax revenue, but, but we'll have to see where we are next year.
Okay, but you, you, Mike, I am not trying to pin you down, but what you're saying is actually you're. You're thinking the possibility may be there that we can fund this account without ever having to go to a capital override?
Uh, in a, in an optimistic scenario, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, no.
Right, you know, but if, you know, look, if, if things hit and we, we were able to lease the, lease the dump for a solar facility, for example, that might create a couple hundred thousand dollars and we could just dedicate that revenue automatically to capital and. And um.
And if, if we. The real, the real issue I was trying to get my arms around is when we funded the other capital override, that's kind of a locked in.
Yes.
Spending chain where this one does not have a locked in spending chain. I'm all in favor of us. Trying to find ways to fund this without having to go to a locked in spending chain. I just want to understand the implications.
Right, and I think that's the other way to think about it too, is that. If we, if we, if we succeed in, in remaining weaned off of free cash for operations. You know, that annual $500,000 free cash could go into the capital stabilization.
Yeah, okay.
And then be funded that way. Um, and then as we, it gives you some flexibility if you're. Able to get grants and those sort of things that you don't have to spend the money then. So it stays in the fund.
I'm all on board with that.
Yeah, stays in the fund, so.
Okay, thank you.
So the capital budget, um, because some of the items that we're going to be looking at are going to be lease purchases, we need an authorizing article for that. The water treatment plant bond authorization article. Um, as you remember, last year we started to separate the water sewer enterprise fund operating budgets are in a separate article. We have an article for Medfield State Hospital maintenance appropriation this year. We will by the end of this year have expended our revolving fund on that.
Yeah, Christine, I want to, I want to challenge why this is on as an article again. Part, part of what I had wanted to do. For the last two or three years was to get the maintenance cost for the state hospital off of an annual article. Uh, and just build it into our normal operating budget. And the reason for that, I mean, obviously if we don't have to spend money because we have revolving fund, that's great. But what happened, I think it was three years ago. When this was an article and at the time there was a little bit of, you know, murmuring on some, some people. Who were kind of impatient with the master planning effort. Saying, well, we just aren't going to fund this. And I, I, I'm looking at this and we don't. I'm saying we don't have a choice about maintaining the property we own. We don't run a separate article for Baxter Park. Or for the, you know, the fields or anything like that. It's built into the operating budget. And I don't understand why we're having this as a standalone article, which in a way isn't really something. That the town should say, oh, I don't want to spend 100,000 this year. Let's just not maintain the state hospital property. Is there, is there a legal reason why it has to be an article or why do we keep putting it here?
No, we can, we can move it into a budget. Um, if the selectmen would like to move it into a budgetary article, we can then.
So Mike, Mike and Pete, if you see where I'm coming from, it's, it's not really a decision. Unless you realistically think if the voters decide they don't want to spend $100,000. That I guess we would just let the hospital sit there and rot for a year. I, I, I'm suggesting we should do that.
Although if, if somebody was unhappy with it, they could put a hold on the budget and not authorize it through that way as well, so.
No, they can, but I'd rather fight it on, I mean, they could do that, I guess, on any, I, they could say, I don't want to maintain Baxter Park anymore. Um, but my point is that we reinforce the notion this is a discretionary decision. And I'm suggesting it absolutely is not. We own this property. We have a responsibility to maintain it.
I, I agree with you, Gus. I think it belongs in, in a budget somewhere.
Mike, what do you think?
No, I, I, I agree, right? And, and you know, what, what the number is and, and I probably is a deep, it essentially is which department is budgets and take responsibility for the landscaping contract. And that's the biggest chunk of this money is the mowing of the grass. Um, and. Since we can't, apparently can't do it with our internal. Resources. Um. It's going to be another contract and I, I, I agree with you. I, I don't think we have a choice in this. It's a maintenance issue. It's not a. It's not a point for debate. Um, in this, and it's not like other hospital issues. It's, it's. Well, as you say, it's land that we own. It's, it's in a little bit of a unique position because. I don't know that we have a department that has control over it or direct responsibility for it. I mean, the, the police go up there, the DPW does some stuff up there. I think Parks and Rec may do some stuff up there, but. It's not like Baxter Park, which is. Under the jurisdiction of a department that's responsible for it. It's not, so that's, that's why I think we've always treated it. A little differently and then we just kept doing it that way. So I, I, I'm with you. I, I would say it should go in the DPW budget. That seems to be the most likely one or Parks and Rec would be the other one, but it's not really a park.
Both, both of those entities actually do lawn mowing, so.
Yeah.
Part of the issue with doing the contract relates to uh recouping and part of the land disposition agreements. Um, decision was made um when we first started doing this, that it was easier to. Um. Keep track of our, our, our operating costs when we.
Right.
Have to submit the land disposition. That's why I believe that's why it didn't originally go to an operating budget.
Well, that makes sense.
Well, so, so this ties back to an issue that I had hoped the townwide master plan would deal with, which is. Is my perception over the past several years is that. There is a split set of responsibilities between DPW and Parks and Rec for various. Outdoor assets that the town has, everything from. Who's cutting the grass in front of the town hall to who's taking care of Baxter Park to who's taking care of the COA. Um, and it, it was specifically why I had hoped that the townwide master plan would take a look at this issue and come up with a recommendation. On who has it, because what we're doing here is we're talking about putting articles on town meetings and I think it's really because. We haven't grappled with who the heck is responsible for maintaining town property with what configuration of thinking. Uh, because right now we're saying we're, we're putting 100,000 in to maintain the state hospital property under the jurisdiction of no department. Because we're not really sure what department should do it. And. I don't think tracking the costs for purposes of reimbursement for the state is a compelling reason to make those kinds of decisions.
Well, especially if we're doing it via a contract, right? If, if we're not actually, it would be harder to track the costs. If we were doing it in-house and trying to attribute some portion of the salary and benefits of whomever's riding the lawnmower. Uh, to the hospital and gas and, and all the rest of it. Here, if we're, if the, the main expense is a mowing contract. We know the amount of the mowing contract, we can track the amount that we've paid, so I don't think tracking it is really a great. You know, it's not really a great uh reason to have a separate article. Um, so I, I, I'm, and I'm, I'm indifferent as to which department. I mean, I, I had kind of hoped that at some point. One of these departments would raise their hands and say, if, if you increase my budget by 50,000. We can get this done and we'll save the town a little money and then that department would get a little more in their budget for whatever they wanted to do. Neither Parks and Rec nor DPW has yet volunteered to do that, but I, but to Mo and Kevin, the offer for me is on the table that if. You can do it for 50 instead of 100, we, we can work at, we can work on a deal. And you keep the 50 even after the hospital, we offload the hospital or whatever we do with it, so um.
Christie, Christine, not to put you, not to actually put you on the spot. But uh, my next observation is as a practical matter. You have overseen the maintenance largely through John Thompson, but in terms of who's actually holding the bag. To spend this money or not spend this money, it would be you.
Correct.
Uh, or, you know, the town, town administrator's office. I wouldn't, I don't have, my issue here is to get it the heck off an article on a town meeting. On it, because it shows up as, it's something that appears to be a decision that I'm saying really isn't a decision. If, if, if people voted it down, that would just be irresponsibility because we would be maintaining our stuff. I don't have a problem. With creating a state hospital budget line under the town administrator's budget. My guess is if the, if the RFP. That were, that the development committee is putting out this spring. Leads to a disposition of the property, say a year from now. This is almost a moot question. You know, it becomes a moot question a year out, so. I don't care about major constitutional decisions about what department should have it. I'm just trying to get it off the list of articles for the town meeting because I think it's a false, I don't think it's a true decision.
So why don't we just leave it that, that Chris will figure that out and, and give us a recommendation on that and then we can just move along on the articles at this point.
We can do that. Um, I do want to mention, and not just because he's going to be in front of you in a few minutes, but um, Mo has. We started working um just before COVID hit last year, we were starting to put together a recommendation and a plan for what we should do for grounds and maintenance department. And Mo has been working with Nick to come up with some alternatives and some ideas. Um, and we will obviously include the state hospital, uh, if we have not uh resolved the issue of the property by then, but I just want to say they have been discussing how to. Manage this as we go forward. We just couldn't, didn't have the bandwidth in order to do that within COVID, so we, we are trying to move forward on that.
Great.
Um, okay, so Article 16. We will move off. Okay. Uh, all right, uh, this is our annual article, transfer of the DOT ride sharing funds. Um.
Sure, that'll be a real blockbuster this year.
$36.
Um, the next article is uh the annual article we've been putting in and this is our, you know, economic vitality fund that we have for. Um, you know, economic uh development within the town and we usually requested in the past $15,000 uh within this article.
Okay.
Um, let's see, so your betterment's paid in advance. Um, this next one, I think the three of you need to have a discussion about, and that is. Authorizing a name change for the Board of Selectmen.
And who, who actually submitted that to us for consideration?
I, I certainly thought it was a good idea to have as a warrant article.
Okay, well, I just, at this point I disagree, but to Christine's point, we need to have a discussion. Okay. So right, right now, this is just among the three of us is whether we want to do that. There was nobody that asked for this.
No, Pete had talked about it last year and.
Oh, Pete's not nobody, Gus. I mean, Pete, yeah, if he asked for it, somebody asked for it.
Correct. So, so.
Nobody more, nobody more important than the selectman asked for.
That would be a minor charter change, so it would be a recommendation that would then result in a ballot push.
Yeah, so we need to talk about that one. I'm, I'm not on board yet. Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I'm not either, certainly not for this town meeting. I think it's a topic that will take up time. Um, and it's not pertinent, immediately pertinent. Um, and. The prime candidate for an alternative name of select board is a name that I, I do not like at all. And uh, if we're going to change the name, we should find a better name to change it to. I know that's what all the other towns have done. It's the path of least resistance, but. I think we can do better than that, so. At least find someone that's grammatic, at a minimum grammatically correct.
Right, plus, plus I would want to hear, I, I, I actually think women should be able to speak for themselves and we have, we have uh. People who can speak to it, given that they've been on the board of selectmen.
Yeah, well, we can have a committee or something or whatever we need to do and we definitely need to involve Ann Thompson's, right? We're not making this decision without hearing from Ann Thompson about it because.
Right.
If we don't, we'll definitely hear from her, so. Um. Um, but I, I would just, it, it just, even if this is going to be something we do eventually, I don't know that this is the year to do it and, you know, an outdoor two-night town meeting with a bunch of. Um, you know, a bu- bunch of pertinent issues kind of coming out of this very unusual circumstance. I think this is something that. Requires the cool deliberation that.
Hmm.
Is not necessarily the characteristic of public discussion in the COVID pandemic era. I'll do that. So personnel plan amendments, Christine, they're already gone?
We're already taking that off. Um. Uh, next article, this was a holdover from last year and this is the disposition of WOT 1 Ice House Road and this is the Kingsbury Club. Um, originally the Board of Selectmen were given authorization to lease the property, but not to sell the property. Uh, and there's been interest in us, uh, now that there's an established business on uh to selling the property versus holding the lease for 99 years.
Hmm.
Um, we then have a series of uh solar articles, including a landfill lease for solar.
Christine, Christine, are we just curious based on some conversations, you know, I've had. Are, will we actually be in a position to authorize that by May?
Authorize the sale?
Yeah, well, yeah, the lease, yeah.
So this would, this would just give the selectmen the authority to uh, to sell the property if and when you're ready to.
Okay.
That's just talking about the dump, the solar on the dump or not?
Yeah, yeah.
No, in terms of the landfill, uh, we are not ready to dispose of that, but this would be um moving towards that. We do think there are some issues we're working through DEP with closure on, but in the meantime, uh, we need to have the authority to.
So it's just, it's just to get the authority, so when we do have things straightened out, we can move ahead.
Right, so we don't have to wait for another town meeting, you know, forget that stuff squared away, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then we're required to put the solar pilot agreements that you took up at your last meeting, uh, will be at town meeting. Uh, we're also in working with Mark as to whether or not the selectmen can have. The authority to approve the pilot agreements without having to go to town meeting going forward, so that we're not holding projects up for close to a year.
So Christie, that means that the Article 24 is the one looking for a broad authorization. Therefore, the reason like Article, the second article for 25.
Hmm.
That, the reason that's off is because we're asking for a broader authorization.
It'll be all encompassing. We're going to ask to approve the pilot agreements that you took up at your last meeting as well as ask for authority moving forward.
Got it, okay.
Um, let's see, uh, then we have entering into the solar PPA agreement. We have the Hinkley South property, uh, which may or may not need to move forward.
Yeah, that may, may drop off depending on what happens, so.
Yep, okay.
Hinkley North, um, and then we have two articles that are being sponsored by the Medfield Energy Committee and that's the Community Choice Electricity Aggregation and the Climate Goals and Resolution.
A quick question, is the community choice electric, electricity aggregation tied to Article 25 authorizing the BOE standard and solar PPA?
No.
What's the PPA for then? I was, I was thinking that was the thing that allowed us. I was thinking that PPA was the one that allowed, that set up the, the electricity aggregation, but it's not.
I don't believe.
He, if we um put solar on the town garage roof, an agreement to purchase the electricity produced by that.
Oh, okay.
Similar to what we did for the Kingsbury, Gus.
Yeah, no, okay, I got it. Okay, okay. So that's not connected, got it.
Then we have a series of planning board articles, including rezoning a parcel on Jane's Avenue, uh, making a modification to the Table of Use Regulations. Uh, and these are all coming back from last year, the food truck, mobile pen, mobile food vendor. Um, they're making some changes to the height and bulk regulations, uh, in addition also for sheds. Um, they're also sponsoring the so- solar photovoltaic facilities overlay. They're also sponsoring the solar photovoltaic facilities overlay districts. And the planning board is also requesting $20,000 for a full zoning diagnostic.
What is, I'm just curious what that is. If I haven't read something I should have read, I apologize, but what is that?
I'll send this along to you. The zoning board is, the planning board is looking to have go through all of their regulations to make sure everything is up to date, make sure they don't have any competing sections. I believe, Mark, you've been working with them on this.
Uh, no.
Okay.
Frankly, I wasn't even aware of it.
I believe it's one of the recommendations coming out of the townwide master plan is something we want to take a look at.
I would just, my only two cents on that would be, we've been there before and the critical issue is to have a, have enough of a timeframe that it, that there's time to do it properly. Years ago.
Night town meeting?
What?
Not at a two night town meeting?
It's not the town meeting part. It was like years, years ago, early in my tenure, they went out at, in the late fall and retained Mark Bobrowski to review the town zoning bylaw. And he came in with a whole package of stuff in December. And then, yeah, it was jammed up against town meeting. Ultimately, it all got withdrawn after we'd gone to the effort of preparing it all because in the rush and people started to analyze it, they realized that there were a lot of unanswered questions and conflicts and everything else. So I don't have an objection to it being done, but it, it needs to be done with a, a long-term approach, if you will.
And Gus, I'll send you, I have a, a really great summary on document from Sarah outlining all of these articles. So I will send that along.
Yeah, okay. That would help. And, and Mark, just to cur, to your point, Mark, I, I, I did hear the townwide master plan comment on this, and I think part of it might even be the fact that as laws have evolved, maybe some of our zoning is just not up to date. But in light of your comment, Mark, is 20,000? I'm, I'm wondering, given what you just said, I don't know whether this is the right time for us to spend money if we don't know for sure what we're doing, but is 20,000, does that sound low to you if we were going to do it right?
I think.
It's, it's a microcosm of what I said about the master plan, which is basically if, if we were starting with a fresh slate in a virgin territory, you could have a canned set of zoning bylaws. It was comprehensive, covered everything. But that's not the case. You've got to develop town. You've got a zoning bylaw that's been in place for years. And there's a whole lot of personal choices that go into it. So it's a commitment from the planning board to work hand in hand with a consultant, whoever it may be, to go through and, and do a thorough analysis.
I believe, Gus, they're breaking it down into a two-step process, and this is the first funding process that'll be made.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
I talked to Mike Taylor and they are going to move forward with the Peak House Historic District still. They will not be able to have their public hearing until mid-April, but they would like to continue on with the article anyway. We have two citizens petitions. One is a recommendation for a Dale Street School site selection amendment with the MSBA. And the second one is to change, to introduce, introduce a new bylaw committee for the school building committee. I talked to Jeff and Abby Marble last night, and they've agreed that we're going to take off the food cupboard article for this year. They're investigating some other avenues, and they will come back to us if they do find a piece of property town owned that they're interested in. But at this time, they agreed it's too early to put the article on for town meeting. So we'll take that off.
Christine, let me, let me back you up again to 38, the recommendation of the Dale Street School Site Selection Amendment. Is that a non-binding article?
It's a.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I needed, thanks.
Yep. And then we're working on updating the stormwater regulations so that they are in compliance with our MS4 permit. Sarah and Mo have been working on that. And then we have an article to appropriate funds for the Affordable Housing Trust. Mike touched on that briefly. We also have an article to adopt scenic road designations for Elm Plain Farm, Nebo and Millbrook.
And just on that, Mark, I'm, I'm short cutting stuff. The, the implications of this seem benign, and, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing anything.
Are you talking about scenic road?
Yep.
Scenic roads primarily protect stone walls and to some extent municipal shade tree, public shade tree, which are within a right of way. So no matter how attractive the suite is, that's not the, that's not the statutory purpose or criteria that you're addressed.
Even though it's called scenic roads. Okay.
Right.
All right. But I, it's, I still, I guess, come away saying this sounds like a fairly benign action.
Does it restrict the ability of some homeowner to replace their stone wall with a fence?
Yes.
By means, before you, before you disturb a stone wall that's within the right of way, you have to come before the, I think it's the zoning board, or it's either the zoning or the planning board, they have to hold a hearing. So the original driver years back was the fact that, that, that people were basically taking stone walls, taking, taking the stones and repurposing them on their own property, and they were losing stone walls throughout New England, or at least throughout Massachusetts. So the statute was resolved. There's also a public shade tree statute as well, which basically says before you take down a tree, you have to hold the hearing and make that determination that's absolutely necessary to take it down. So that, those are the two primary impacts.
Then there was a discussion several months ago that we may be seeking interim design funds for the elementary school project. That's been withdrawn. We're not moving forward with that. I'm fairly confident that we will have a retroactive collective bargaining agreement for police on the warrant. And we will have one for fire definitely. And then we do have an article for appropriation of a prior year's bill.
Big bill or a little bill?
Right now it's a really small bill.
Good. Okay.
One that would just be easier for me to write a check, but we'll.
That would be too easy, apparently.
We'll let Scott pull that article out when he needs to restore a sense of momentum at the town meeting.
I might just collect, do a collection that night and come up with a hundred and five dollars.
All right.
Our action items, we've got the vote to approve the memorandum agreement on the Medfield Permanent Firefighter Association Local 4478. I A F F, AF of L C I O.
Correct. And this was our topic of discussion for our executive session last week where you reviewed and agreed that you would sign it. And per protocol, you need to take that vote in the open session.
Anybody have any questions or can we have a motion?
I'll just say, as, as serving on this committee with Christine and the fire chief and Bob Conlin, it was a long process to go through this negotiation. It took us a while to get here. This is a two-year contract, but we're near the end of year one of this discussion. I think it was productive. We have a lot of new firefighters and paramedics. The department's changed a bit with the addition of the ALS and the hiring of the four new people. I think the, Christine, do you want to cover any of the changes? Just to, I don't know that anybody's raising their hand for any questions, but in case anybody who's come to the meeting wants to talk about fire contracts, just go over. But the changes are, in case anybody has a question.
No, let me highlight it. So just to go back, the current contract expired June 30th of 2020. We started negotiations back in January of 2020, and obviously we were put on hold for a little bit during COVID, but then we met quite regularly. The MOU represents two-year contract. The first year fiscal year 2021, which we're currently in, provides a $1,500 one-time COVID stipend. And also provides a $750 retro payment in lieu of any sort of cost of living increase for fiscal year 21. Fiscal year 20.
In lieu of any retro payment that would be, be resulting from the other changes to the contract as well. Yeah.
Fiscal year 22 is a 2% cost of living, and that is what we propose for our non-union personnel as well. We are changing in this contract. The lieutenants will now become captains, and we are eliminating the lieutenant position and just having firefighter EMT, paramedics and captain EMT, paramedics. We also took the opportunity to change something in this contract, which was an issue in that we had no differential between firefighters or lieutenants, now captains. So if you went from being a firefighter to being a lieutenant, you had to start pretty much at the end of the wage scale for the lieutenant. And there should be between a 15 and 20% differentiation between those two salary structures. So we did address that. We addressed the fifth week of vacation at 20 years. We changed our super holiday schedule and we introduced an educational benefit. And we are still offering an incentive for any of those existing firefighters who are willing to go for their paramedic certification. So we kept that in there as well. And then there was, there was some minor administrative language that was beneficial to the town in terms of calculating overtime for the Fair Labor Standards Act, which was helpful for the town.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right. I was, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to move.
Thank you.
I didn't see any questions. Just going to move that we agree to and authorize us to sign the memorandum of agreement between the town of Medfield and the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association Local 4478.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yep.
Mr. Merby.
I.
And Mr. Markucci.
I.
And that is located on the table outside my office. If you can come by and sign it, that would be great.
See you tomorrow.
Just out of curiosity, Christine, am I the only one who hasn't signed the election warrant yet?
You are not. I need Pete to sign the election warrants as well.
So maybe you could put that, maybe you could put that up there at the same time. I've tried three times now and I just picked the wrong time. So.
Marion actually told me that today, and she offered to come to your house and have you sign it.
Well, she, if she brings the contract with her, then, no, she just, she just puts them together. Just put them all together and we'll take care of it.
I will, I will leave everything on the selectman's table to be signed.
Right.
This next action item, request to reinstate door-to-door solicitations. So we had stopped, and to be honest, didn't have any requests when COVID first hit for door-to-door solicitations. And we had not allowed any, we didn't have any requests for. We've recently had a solar company out of New Jersey that is adamant they need to start their door-to-door solicitations. So I asked Mark to do some review work on it, and he can update you as to whether or not you have the authority to stop that from happening.
So, so my first reaction, first of, my first knowledge of this was a, apparently they made applications to the police chief and cheated. They denied them based on the COVID penalty. Chris, feel free to correct me at any point.
I think it was more that I said we hadn't reinstated them yet, and then we received their letter from their attorney.
All right. So we got a letter from an attorney from New Jersey laying out a number of reasons why we had no authority. Basically that they were all essential workers. It was an essential industry. The governor's declaration addressed them. We didn't have authority to preempt it. The governor had preempted a local authority. My reaction was, I can understand how that applies to the construction workers, but I didn't see how it applied to door-to-door salespeople, frankly. So I went on to the state's website to look at the breakdowns and, and how they assigned essential workers, et cetera. And I wasn't finding anything where door-to-door salespeople were addressed specifically. So in the, in the interim, Chris and I had conferred, and she told me that Bridget Sweet was reaching out, the board of health agent was reaching out to the State Department of Public Health. And I simultaneously reached out to attorney Cheryl Savara, who's the attorney for the local boards of health, the Association of Local Boards of Health. She got back to me earlier today and basically said that the issue is fairly widespread in the case of the solar industry. And that in fact, the Department of Public Health has taken the position that they are all, all aspects of their operations fall under essential workers and therefore have authority to do as requested. So that's, that's the Department of Public Health's position on that, that they're essential workers, every, every aspect of the solar industry.
What, what COVID precautions does a worker, even an essential worker from New Jersey, need to observe in coming to Massachusetts?
I'm guessing that there's some potential that they have to quarantine if they're coming from New Jersey to Massachusetts. There is certainly a list as to most people coming in from most states have to quarantine. And then there is, you know, the issue of masking and social distancing. Private property owners have the right to say no, and basically to tell people to get off their property. So. Even though the screening mechanism, and, and this only would apply to solar, if some other industry or trade or what have you that wants to go door-to-door, you'd have to look at what, where they fall in, in terms of state protection.
I assume we still have, sorry.
The designation of them as essential workers is a federal, New Jersey or Massachusetts determination?
Massachusetts under Governor Baker's oversight for the reopening of Massachusetts.
Okay. Sorry, Mike. Go ahead.
I assume we still have our usual regulatory authority to require them to be under certain hours and notify the police chief and all of that, right?
Right.
So I mean, if we're not allowed to categorically ban the activity based on the governor's, I mean, for, and I forget, Mark, I'm, obviously we can't ban door-to-door First Amendment activities.
Right. That's correct. That's, that's completely.
Yeah. And so what would our, I, I know there's restricted, there's commercial speech restrictions and all of that, and it's a different level of, of protection, but even though they've been designated as, as essential workers, we still have whatever authority we had before the pandemic. And so.
They have a right to solicit under, under safe, reasonable safety regulation.
So I mean, that might be.
With the governors, consistent with the governor's edict.
So if we weren't allowed to ban them before, we're not allowed to ban them now, we can still impose our usual regulatory requests. I don't think we actually adopted a ban on door-to-door soliciting.
No, I think we just stopped doing it. We didn't have any requests.
Yeah. And then it looks like we don't have a request yet, right? We have a form to fill out and all the rest of it.
Yeah. So they, they would like to fill out a request, and we explained to them, we would need to talk to you about whether or not the selectmen were comfortable with that. That's when we got the letter from their attorney saying we had no choice. But we can still follow our protocol of having a public hearing and having them come in to do that. This was more just to start letting everybody know that we're going to move forward.
Yeah, I think we should do that. And I, my suggestion would be that we also ask for a, a, a recommendation from the board of health.
At, at the very least, if they're bringing in people from out of state, then they, then they have to absolutely abide by those protocols. If, if they're hiring local people to do the solicitation, that's a different story.
Right. No, that's right. And I think that can be part of the conditions as well. If, if somebody's coming from, from New Jersey.
I mean, the point is, the governor has laid this all out in his various emergency declarations from time to time. And the, the initial one was clear that, that anything locally that was inconsistent was superseded. But anything that's consistent with the governor's order is okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
We'll reach out to them and see when we can schedule a public hearing for them.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Committee appointments, appoint Men Nak, Chi, Chuvukala, Chuvukala to the Board of Health as an associate member, and appoint Jeff Kane to the Board of Health as an associate member.
Both of these candidates have been to the Board of Health, have attended several meetings and are still interested in becoming associate members.
Well, we might, we might question their judgment, but we appreciate their interest.
I'm counting on a reversion to the mean here. How bad could it be?
Mr. Sorrell.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, I just want to bring this issue up because it's, it's arisen periodically and recently. And that is that numerous committees may have associate members as a matter of practice, but associate members, unless there's specific provision in the statute or the charter or bylaw, it's really a formality. They have no authority. Most importantly, they cannot step into the shoes of a full member who's not there as part of a quorum or a vote or whatever. There just really there is a learning experience, hopefully kind of like a farm team to train for when that, when there's an opening for a full-time position. The exceptions are like the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. In both cases, there's statutory provision to carry associate members to avoid conflicts where you needed super majority votes.
Correct. And they are both aware, and the Board of Health is aware that they are associate members, non-voting, non-quorum. We're just excited to go from one member of the Board of Health to seven members of the Board of Health in a year, in a pandemic. So.
Well, and I think with Mr. Kane, we have a long-sought engineer.
And, and Mina works with the contact tracing collaborative and has experience in that. So these might have been targeted recruitments for associate members, though.
Well.
Excellent. So we have a motion then?
Yep. And I will move that we appoint Minakshi Chivukala to the, and Jeff Kane to the Board of Health as associate members.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
And Mr. Markucci, aye.
And then we've got the contract with Watered and Current for owner's project management services for the water treatment plant project.
Mo has been waiting patiently. And I let, Pete, you should let Mo know that Christine is the one who put him last on the agenda.
And now he's at the state hospital. It's a great night.
Oh, thank you for coming.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. In regards to the proposed water treatment facility, we're looking to, went out for an RFS, a request for services for a owner's project manager. For this, we had two qualified proposals, one from Western Sampson, one from Watered and Current. We had a small committee put together to review the criteria, the proposals, and go through a scoring matrix. We are recommending Watered and Current. That's the contract in front of you today. This would be just for the initial phase of this owner's project manager would be for the oversight of the 100% design submittal and the the procurement for the bidding documents. We're looking to go out to bid before town meeting to have a kind of a finite number to, to present at the town meeting.
And I'm seeing the number 21,500?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, Gus?
Yeah, Mo, Mo, just given the, the environmental pushback, this is, looks like we're moving ahead. Does that mean the state is hap, are we past all the potential barriers that would have made it difficult for us to do this?
This, this will be conditional on passing a town meeting and the results of the archaeological dig that is recommended. So but we, there are other, there are a lot of other projects that are competing against the, the same kind of contractors we're looking at for our project. We're, we're trying to be proactive and getting that ahead of time so that we get better numbers. If we wait too long, we're, we're just afraid that we're gonna, we're gonna see higher, higher numbers later.
I guess, I guess, to put it directly, are, were the objections registered by the Deposit River Watershed Association issues with us and the state in terms of what our plans are here?
Well, I mean, the deposit is, you know, they have their, their views and opinions. I mean, but this is something that DEP wants us to do and something that we're, we're permitted for.
That's what I wanted. Okay. That's all I wanted to do.
Yep.
Mike, any questions, comments?
No.
I'm good, too. How about a motion then?
All right. I would move that we approve and who's signing this one? Us. I would, I would move that we approve the contract with Watered and Current and authorize us to sign the contract for owner's project management services for the water treatment plant project.
Second.
Mr. Peterson. Mr. Murby.
Yes.
And Mr. Markucci, yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Gus.
Thank, thank you, guys.
It's gonna be up on that table, Christine.
Yes.
Right. Gotta break two pens in case one of them runs out.
Uh, let's see. Nothing on our consent agenda, no citizen comment, town administrator updates. Chris?
I'll let the, the budget presentation from earlier stand as our update for this week.
Okay. Uh, next meeting dates, every Tuesday in March, it looks like.
Yes, it is.
Selectment reports. Gus?
I guess, too, after our meeting last Tuesday, the Development Committee met on Wednesday, and we, we actually had, I think, our longest meeting ever going through the specific feedback on the, most of, most of it was focused on the scoring. So Mike, you'll be happy to hear that, that was subject to an excruciatingly detailed discussion, all intended to try to incorporate the feedback and to, and to, you know, get to a good spot on that. So that, that took up most of our time there, but I think we're in a good spot to be able to finalize that. I think Doug Diallo probably has most of the heavy lifting around incorporating the things that came in. The other point I would get, guess I could make on that is another extended discussion we had was around the Energy Committee inputs. You know, just as a side comment, I think Jim Nail has been a good choice as a, as a, as a contact from the Energy Committee. He's, he's done a good job of representing the interests of, of the Energy Committee, but has also done a good job of listening where certain things that the Energy Committee might have wanted to see didn't necessarily pass muster with the rest of the members of the Development Committee in terms of the prescriptive, like, quality characteristic of some of those things. So I, I think we got to a good spot where everybody on both sides understood everything. And a lot of what the Energy Committee has put in will be incorporated, but not perhaps exactly the way it was submitted. I also went, because Meegan Sullivan had asked well in advance to schedule us to come in on the Net Zero Community Forum of the Sustainability Subcommittee of the Dale Street School Building Committee. I listened in on that, and I thought it was a nice, it was a nice presentation. Just to help explain what, what it is the Building Committee is trying to do with that project and what some of the possibilities are. I thought it was actually a nice, for those who were interested to tune in, I thought it was a nice overview of what was going on there and what we were trying to accomplish. So I thought that was actually a nice, a nice session.
Mike?
Just quickly, I also attended that committee meeting that goes on the Net Zero for the, the school building. It was, it was interesting. I was familiar with a lot of it from the existing school building committee meetings, but it was still a useful exercise. And then the, the good news is, if you hadn't heard, we have received four bids for the Hinkley South property for the development of senior housing on that location. That's going to be on the agenda for the Affordable Housing Trust Board this Thursday. And if the trust board is able to make a recommendation or get through its deliberations and discussions, we may be able to present that to, I guess, just Peter, Gus and I, because Pete's probably recused, I think, given the location, potentially for a, a discussion and award next Tuesday if possible, but definitely at one of the meetings in March to move that, move that process along. So that'll be on the, the trust agenda for Thursday, and then maybe our agenda for next Tuesday.
Great. I had a town, a townwide master planning committee meeting that conflicted with the school building committee sustainability subcommittees meetings. The master planning committee is going to get out the materials from the plan to the different groups that have been asked to assume leadership roles for different goals and bring back the results of that to this board. The Metrol Foundation Legacy Fund Community Board met last night and is, is working on completing the transfer from the participation with Metro West Foundation to the, the Metrol Foundation. It's going to be handling the endowment, the legacy fund going forward. And the, so we figured out, we're working on figuring out the details of how that's going to happen. And that's it for me. Anything else informational? Nothing on the informational side? Are we done?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby.
Aye.
Markucci, aye. And I, I just wanted to note the last four attendees is a powerhouse quartet with Anime O'Shea Brook, Bill Masaro, John Harney, and Sharon Tate were the last four. You couldn't do, you can't do much better than that four people hanging on to the end. So thank you for staying with us to the end, and I think we're, we're good.
And everybody, thank you.